All right. Following this meeting of the Board of Education to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. And that's Ms. Downey, do I have a second? Yes, Ms. Costin, all in favor of the consent agenda? That passes seven zero. Okay, we are going straight into the public hearing. I assume you're all here for the strategic plan as Michael Joseph talked about. So, um, so I don't know where Karen is, but we have a lot of people, so I want to get started. So let's start with our GHS student government. Yay. And this is their inaugural meeting. I've had the pleasure of meeting them at XCOM at Greenwich High School, but here they are. Welcome, guys.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board. My name is Mitch Goldstein, and I am the Student Body Vice President. I truly can't express how grateful I am to be speaking tonight. Almost a month ago, the elected officers of student government met at Greenwich High to discuss our goals for the year. One idea that seemed to be brought up repeatedly was the need for an increase in school spirit at Greenwich High School. With masks, cohorts, and plexiglass dividers, the past three years have not been the best for students. So this year, we've been very busy trying to make our school feel less like a sterile learning environment and more like a warm community. Firstly, two weeks ago, the Office of Student Activities hosted a freshman social. All freshmen were invited to attend the social, where they could play carnival games, hang out with friends, and get to know each other. Then, this past Saturday, we started off homecoming week with our homecoming dance. Once again, our student center was used to provide students with an opportunity to dance and have fun. Following the dance, we kicked off our Homecoming Spirit Week with USA Day on Monday and Country versus Country Club Day on Tuesday, which was surprisingly popular. On Wednesday, we had Senior Dress-Up Day, which is always a favorite of the senior class. Today was Pyjama Day, and as we speak, the senior class is sponsoring a dodgeball tournament down the road at GHS. Finally, as we head into the homecoming football game, we will have Cardinal Apparel Day and a pep rally in the Cardinal Stadium during school. To conclude our homecoming week, our varsity football team will play Suddington this Saturday in our stadium. This year, I'm thrilled to say that we've noticed more kids participating in homecoming events than in years prior, and we are excited to see how this increased sense of school community and unity continues to grow throughout the year. On the note of school community, this year, each class is planning to host at least two events in order to foster a more unified school environment. Currently, the senior class is planning a movie night, and while specifics are still being worked out, we want students to be able to bring blankets and chairs and watch a movie on the field with their friends. The other classes' events are still in the works, and I'll have more information on their events next month. To conclude, I want to talk about my personal goals as Student Body Vice President for the year. To do that, I thought it would be best to start from the beginning of the year. A few weeks ago, when I walked into the school, I was thrilled that almost all the negative reminders of the pandemic had been removed. While I was happy about this, I knew that in my position, I had been given the responsibility to make sure the current GHS environment feels more similar to the one that existed prior to the pandemic. So this year, I hope to make the GHS community a more spirited, inviting one, and I'm thrilled to have been given this opportunity. And over the coming year, I'm eager to work with the Board of Education, GHS faculty, and the student body to make our school a more vibrant place. On behalf of my peers, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight, and now it is my honor to pass the mic over to our Student Body President, Isabella Gega.
Good evening, Chairman Stowe. I'm a little short, one second. Good evening, Chairman Stowe, Dr. Jones, and members of the board, and meeting attendees, a lot of us today. My name is Isabella Gega, and I am proud to announce that I will be serving Greenwich High School as this year's Student Body President. Mitch and I are so grateful to be speaking for all of you today as the spokespeople of our beloved Greenwich High School. As we continue to move away from the dreaded COVID, dare I say the name, I am finally relieved that we are approaching a sense of normalcy. In this coming year, Mitch and I will work alongside XCOM to unite our student community after two years of Google meets, one-way corridors, plastic dividers, and masks. Initiatives fostering school spirit through student activities will be critical in supporting our school norms and traditions that we hold so dear. This year is set, the goal of this year is to set new precedents for future classes. This is the year we establish Greenwich High School as a beating heart of our community. This is the year we dreamed of prior to COVID, and this is the year for everlasting change. Similar to last year, student government will utilize classroom reps from each advisor base in a fresher fashion, and we will launch a new system called subcommittees dependent on issue-based conflicts we see within the school, and they will be related to areas such as food services, school spirit, communications, and flex time. Given this new system, I am optimistic that student representatives will be able to dive into community issues and events and participate in more school policymaking issues and truly have their voices heard. This will promote targeted change within our school and widen our scope for change. Sorry. Student committees will allow students to participate in what they believe needs to be addressed and provide the opportunity to make a real impact within our educational environment. In collaboration with students, Mitch and I will continue to work to administer any, to, with the administration, to address any student concerns and set forth leadership that listens to their constituents. Beyond that, I aim to continue initiatives from my previous years, such as fundraising, reimagining the student center, midterm, final policies, and enhancing food services. With the supportive staff, with our supportive staff advisor, Mr. Silkman, back there, the support from our administration, of course, and the wonderful Board of Education, I am optimistic for the future we have in store. I am so excited for the year to come and beyond ecstatic to see what the future brings. Thank you so much, and look forward to speaking with you every month at the Board of Education meeting. Thank you.
Thank you both, and welcome again. It's great having you. Okay. Next up, we will hear from GEA. Lil.
It's okay, I got this. I got this. All right. Well, good evening, board members, our Greenwich parent community, students, GEA members, and everyone watching online. My name is Lillian Perron, proud president of our over nine. Oh, thank you. Over 900 GEA members. I first like to thank my negotiations team for many hours of hard work that they put forth in the negotiation process. Robin Chanel, Chuck Costello, Chrissy Distel, Leon Hinkle, Kevin Kreuz, Melissa Marquini, Michelle Gilanda Rosa, Ryan Wallach, and David Ong, and Juan, our CEA Uniserv rep. I would also like to thank our Board of Ed Negotiations Chair, Joe Kelly, Kathleen Stowe, Christina Downey, Dr. Jones, Dr. Bud. I believe we negotiated a fair contract for both sides. I want to say thank you for your hard work. I anticipate that the board will vote tonight to move the process forward, as well as the RTM and BET, since we were all in the same room and all sat at the same negotiations table to reach this fair contract. Thank you all for participating in this process. I'd like to address a few items that are on the agenda tonight. Two of them, school climate survey and GPS strategic school plan and update. First though, I noticed our parents had over 75% of positive responses in all four areas, including homeschool connection and a strategic metric, welcoming partners in children's learning, adequate opportunities for me to express my concerns and opinions, how confident are your ability to support your child's learning, homeschool connections composite. Next, students feel they are valued members of the school community, 58%. Staff and learning environment, 54%. Now, hold on to that, that thought and those numbers. I want to move into the strategic plan. That was from the survey. So on a strategic plan. The mission of Greenwich Public Schools, educate all students to highest level academic achievement, to enable them to reach and expand their potential, to prepare them for productive, responsible, ethical, creative, and compassionate members of society. I want to focus on Goal Four, increase family and community engagement. On four, I see that from 2022 to 2007, we start with the annual parent conferences, and we end up with two pre-K for the high school. My question is this. I'm not arguing the powerful effect of community connections with our parents, but from reading the statistics and the data that was in that chart, where parent satisfaction is close over 75%, almost 80%, while our students and staff are 58% and 54% respectively. Instead of adding two conferences, K-12 with parents, which will add more to the teacher's plate and workload, shouldn't we be focusing on the low student and staff results as our top priority? Goal seven, increase positive working environment. So Cabinet Members and GPS Administration Team recognizes that a robust and supportive school climate and culture are essential to the success of our students and schools. GPS leaders prioritize the empowerment and professional growth of all employees. Totally agree with that. Strategy five, how will GPS accomplish this goal? Increase administrator and coordinator support around teacher academic freedom and resource vetting. Talk a little bit about the vetting rubric, which is a draft and process. GE knows that this is a new district initiative, and we are still learning about it as it is in draft stages. We know this because we met with Dr. Jones and the Cabinet Members this week to discuss its implementation. The district has said there is a first draft and involving document. GEA has requested that going forward, we must have a seat at the table and allow teacher feedback to be part of the process. That will be, we will be in the trenches, actually, using the rubric. Bottom line, our teachers are outstanding professionals, highly qualified individuals with multiple degrees, a majority have years of experience. They are educators who have always put their students first, and they make students' well-being their top priority. Our teachers want to give a wide range of district-approved resources and curriculum. They want to know that everything they put in front of the students is vetted and trusted resource. Academic freedom is not teaching whatever you want. It is highly qualified professionals using their expertise to make decisions about which trusted, approved resources and lessons work best for the students in their class. Our GSH staff are specialists in their area of expertise, not generalists. GEA looks forward to learning more about the vetting committee and their timeline and effectiveness, as well as ensuring teachers are receiving adequate time in their planning period to incorporate these new steps. In closing. I have no idea what will be coming out in, in the comments tonight, but I do want to say, on behalf of GEA, we've been through, we, everybody in the community, teachers, administrators, we've been through this together. We've stuck together. Things weren't perfect, but we worked it out. We were in school, and we have a steady administrative team, and we would like to continue working with our administrative team. We've built and collaborated a strong relationship with Dr. Jones. We've hired some new, exciting principals. The teachers love their principals, well, most of them. And it's important for us to have collaboration and work together on this, because we are here. This is about our students and what's best for them, and they need us. We need to catch up on what they're missing in their learning. We need to help them with stress and anxiety, and we need to put them first and do what is best for them. Thank you to the board. Thank you, Dr. Jones, and thank you to everyone.
Thanks, Lil. Ops, next, PTA Council.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, Board of Education members. I'm Frances Wu-Nobe, mom of three GPS kids and the 2022-2023 President of PTA Council Greenwich. It's an umbrella organization representing the 15 Greenwich Public School PTAs and their families. I'm honored to speak tonight and remind everyone to please join their school PTA, or in my case, three PTAs. Entering tonight's Board of Education meeting, P-TAC takes note of the rallies being held outside. As a nonpartisan, nonpolitical, nonprofit organization, P-TAC's mission is to coordinate, communicate, and advocate across the district for our students with our teachers, administrators, and parents. Greenwich Public Schools are, for decades and continuing to this day, high-performing, high-achieving, highly-ranked, and highly-respective relative to other school districts in the nation, in Connecticut and in nearby New York communities. These high standards and achievements are the result of the talent, skills, and professionalism of all the dedicated educational professionals in the Greenwich Public Schools. In partnership, we thank, honor, and support our GPS team, who do the hard work every day, especially as we turn the corner beyond the pandemic. Turning to tonight's hot topics, PTA would like, P-TAC would like the Board of Education and school administration to, A, continue to make up the pandemic loss and ensure our students continue to achieve and advance academically. We're looking forward to hearing tonight's strategic plan update. B, continue to work with Greenwich Public, Greenwich Police Chief Heavy, who's here tonight, to ensure our students' safety and security and find a solution to have onsite presence all day, every day. C, keep focus on ensuring our kids get bused to and from school and sports safely and on time. And yes, I'm one of those families on the tardy part of town, that's bus 25. And all drivers, please remember to stop at least 10 feet away from a school bus, and do not proceed until the bus has retracted the stop arm and deactivated the red flashing lights for our kids. Do not pass school buses. And D, keep up the increased family communication from the district in each school. With some parents never having seen the inside of a school building or meeting their teacher in person, the increased communication via phone, email, smore, and even video message is so important to build back our school community. We believe these basics, school buses, safety, security, scholastic achievement, along with capital projects in the strategic plan, are what the BOE should continue to laser-focus on without distraction. And as importantly, with the new school year upon us, we welcome new beginnings, new friendships, new connections, and new ideas. Bienvenidos, bienvenu, welcome to the 100-plus new GPS teachers. Yoko so, Huang Ling, Huang Ling, welcome to the new GHS Student Body Presidents. Falche to the new ninth graders. Ben Vinda to the new sixth graders. Ahla Wasalan to the new kindergarteners. Ben Vinita to the new preschoolers. You got this. Let's have a great year of learning. In closing, please join our October 7th P-TAC public presentation with Dr. Boy to support National Bullying Awareness Month, and the October 25th Mark Bracket Presentation with our P-TAC DI, which our P-TAC DI Committee will also mention. And for those celebrating, Shana Tova.
Thank you, Frances. Okay, we will now start our public comment. As a reminder, everyone gets three minutes. We would like to hear from the entire list in the first hour, if that's possible. So we'll say the name, the next person, so they can sort of be on deck, keep it moving. We'd also appreciate everyone respecting the time. Karen will give you a minute warning, moving from speaker to speaker without delay, and we'd appreciate, of course, everyone being respectful as we, as we are to you. So with that, let's get started. Dana Franks, followed by Anna Kostovic.
Good evening. Several things have recently come to light that are very concerning for me as a parent. I have three boys under the age of eight, and I would like to be home right now, reading them all bedtime stories, but my concern with what is happening in our school district has brought me here tonight instead. I would like to start by expressing my sincere gratitude to our North Street School teachers and leaderships, who have been nothing but wonderful to my children. Last year, my oldest son got sick at school, and his teacher rubbed his back while he threw up at recess. She treated him with love and compassion, and I couldn't have asked for a more caring person to spend the days teaching my son. She helped him with his reading comprehension and encouraged him to ask important questions about what he read. The last thing I want to do is take away from the amazing GPS teachers, who truly do the job they were hired to do, care for our children, and nurture their growing brains. I have nothing but respect and love for the teachers, who have remained focused and professional during these difficult times, where the country is divided on nearly every possible topic. With that said, we are all well aware of the viral video of the COSCOB Assistant Principal admitting to hiring teachers with his own political bias. This video is unfortunately just the tip of the iceberg. Parents have been speaking up for the last two years about inappropriate content in the classrooms, and instead of taking those concerns seriously and considering ways to stop it, these parents were gaslit and dismissed again and again. Chairwoman Stowe, last week, you were quoted in the Greenwich Times, saying, "The Board of Education operates in a bipartisan manner, and our focus and responsibility is the education of our students. We do not get involved in any political group pushing an agenda. I guess it's election season." End quote. Please understand, parents want a bipartisan education. You are saying the BOE operates in a bipartisan manner, but there is now clear evidence that some teachers have been pushing political agendas in their classroom without consequence. You guess it's election season? I promise you, after November, these concerns will not go away. We now have the results of the Freedom of Information Act requests, and we have seen the politically charged material that has been taught for the last few years. We are simply asking for controversial political topics to be left out of the classroom. Many topics do merit discussion in older grades, but they must be approached in a balanced manner with open discussion and debate, without anyone fearing to express their point of view. None of us want to micromanage our children's teachers. I have always put my full trust into our teachers.
Thirty seconds.
I want to continue to do that. We want our kids to be kids. This is not an extremist concept. I sincerely hope that these issues can be addressed quickly and with full transparency to restore the trust in the BOE operations. Please don't just say the right thing, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anna Kostovic, followed by Joseph Solari. Sorry. We'd like to keep it moving, so everyone can go in, so please hold your applause, if possible. Go ahead, Anna, then followed by Joseph Solari.
Good evening. My name is Anna Kostovic, and I'm a parent to three children in our Greenwich Public Schools. I also grew up here and attended Greenwich K-12, public and private schools. I find myself, over the past few years, doing what my parents never felt the need to have to do, and that is to attend and listen to every single Board of Ed meeting. And it's sad that I say this, because I'm doing it as a concerned parent. Dr. Jones, we have been told by you time and time again that parents have full transparency, and any form of indoctrination has no place at GPS. Yet what came out of the COSCOB Assistant Principal's mouth showed prejudice, discrimination, and political and religious bias. It's shocking and intolerable. This high-ranking educator said that he can't get past the parents, because we, the parents, shape our kids. His solution, trying to mitigate the influence we have on our own children. These are the people that are putting progressive ideology before education and the love of our youth. These early educational years are a highly impressionable point in our kids' lives, and I believe that most teachers devote their time and work tirelessly to teach our kids to be free thinkers, and we are grateful to every single one of them. We love our schools, we love our teachers. I've been blessed to have some of the most compassionate and caring teachers challenge and support my kids in Old Greenwich School. Unfortunately, Mr. Boland isn't the only educator in our school system that is creating a disservice to our kids. There are more of them, and we want them out of our schools. The Board of Ed should instruct school administrators to remove any instructional material that has not been reviewed and approved by majority vote by the BOE. A staggering statistic, more than 50% of Connecticut schoolchildren are not at grade-level expectations in English and math. Our kids are our future, and we are neglecting to teach them. We need to go back to basics and get rid of wasting time on politics, sexually explicit material, gender, and race. I don't care what our teachers' ideologies and political beliefs are, as long as they're teaching them reading, writing, and arithmetic. Our pub, our public education system is being hijacked all across the country, but we, the parents, are here to stop this madness. We will not stay silent until we are assured that we can entrust you to make sure that our children are free to develop their own moral compasses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joseph Solari, followed by Jackie Homan. Can we keep it moving? Joseph, are you here? Are you online? Oh, okay. Joseph Solari, followed by Jackie Homan.
Good evening, Board of Education. You know what you're supposed to do tonight, which is do the right thing. I'm ceding my time. Ms. Kimberly Fiorello.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Joe. I'm State Representative Kimberly Fiorello. Thank you for your time. When I came to the United States, I was in the ESL in a public school system. I love the public school system. I am a product of that. And, but the public school system I went to was focused on core knowledge. Okay. I serve on the Education Committee up in Hartford, and what I want folks to know is that there is a trend that is going away from recognizing parental rights, and it's coming up from Hartford. There were bills in Education Committee, as well as in the Insurance Committee, that allows outside adults to bypass the role and the importance of notifying parents. This, you are the body that is closest to the parents here. I urge you to listen to the needs of these parents, because there, there is a great desire for these folks to have to be heard. The things that came out of that video that were most disturbing is that the Assistant Principal mentioning that the agenda is subtle, that they serve the child, not the parents, and for him to suggest that, for him to admit that actually, his ability to get his agenda through is harder, because the parents are on to him. The refusal of Hartford to take on a parental rights bill, which I proposed, is indicative of how important your role is as the Board of Ed, to protect the rights of these parents. The school serves the parents. It is, in the civil society, it is the role of the parents. We must see the parents as a primary decision-makers for our children. And I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up, Jackie Homan, followed by Peter Scher.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Jones. As you know, I've been coming to these meetings for the last year and a half, asking you to stop using profanity-laced, sexually explicit, and divisive racial content inside our schools. I've asked you to stop teaching unapproved and therefore illegal curriculum. I've asked you to be honest about the white fragility training that you conducted with administrators. I've been gaslighted and mocked by liberal parents, the local press, and even the previous chairman of this board for making these allegations. But after 10 months of waiting, I've backed up my allegations with the results of a number of Freedom of Information Act requests. I found emails that show how you sidestepped the required Board of Education approval process to add the Controversial Ruler Program. I learned about how you accepted GIPS. You accepted GIPS from radical third-party organizations that are attempting to undermine the morality of our children. Now we have this video from Project Veritas that seems to corroborate the things that I've been saying, and more, potentially revealing systemic discrimination in the hiring practices. Even though some have chosen to attack the messenger and the editing of the video, the Assistant Principal still made all of these allegations in his own words. And like it or not, Project Veritas hasn't lost any court cases over editing. Frankly, I don't understand how you could let it get this bad. I don't understand how you can be in violation of so many of your own policies and procedures and not be doing anything visibly to rectify the situation. I don't understand how we have so many scandals in this district, and we still have the same leadership in place. If this was corporate America, if this was corporate America, the leadership would be held accountable, especially since this call- especially since this culture appears to be pervasive and driven from the top down. Sadly, our schools have become way too politicized. We've allowed ideology to replace fact in certain classes. We've allowed emotions to replace academics in our schools. Parents are here tonight because we love our teachers and we want to support our schools. We want to see a focus on excellent academics. We want politics-free schools. We want a high-quality education for our children, not an indoctrination. I hope you take action tonight. You need to put the superintendent and the deputy superintendent on leave while you conduct an
Thirty seconds.
Independent, district-wide investigation of all of the allegations. You need to immediately stop using all the unapproved curriculum, and you need to start following your own policies and procedures. And if you aren't courageous enough to take these steps yourselves, then perhaps you should consider resigning from the board so that others can step up and do the hard work for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Peter Scher, followed by Kara Filbin. Peter, is he here or is he online?
Peter's here online. He's ready to talk.
Is Peter online?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Ed members. I know you're sitting tonight in a difficult meeting. I know that many of you may have personal or political animosities against me, so therefore you may not be listening to what I'm saying. But I hope that tonight you'll set those aside and maybe consider or take in what I'm about to tell you. When I joined the board in 2009, I realized that I had inherited a legacy of many people who had come before me, who had built the amazing school system that Greenwich Public Schools is, has been, and is today. You have a responsibility, the same as I did at that time, to be trustees of this legacy. The school system is in a state of crisis, not because of the revelations of Mr. Boland and his hiring practices. Although incredibly troubling as they are, and I'm certain you will conduct a complete investigation of his specific acts. And I understand, and I'm probably pretty certain by now, you've received advice from counsel that you need to properly handle yourselves in a way there so that his rights are protected as an employee, but also the rights of the board are protected. I want to talk to you, though, more about the issue that is much more troubling. If you listen carefully to what Mr. Boland says, and he explains why he was doing what he was doing, that is far and away an existential threat to our school system. He made clear that his purpose was, and the purpose of hiring teachers in this way would be that so they could subtly send messages of a political nature to cultivate students to have a particular political point of view when they leave the Greenwich school system. That's an incredibly troubling development. Unfortunately, you as board members have had indicators, even when I was on the board, that this was happening. I can think about the teaching of unapproved curriculum, particularly the white privilege checklist at Western Middle School. You were also aware of it with the miseducation of the American boy being taught at Greenwich High School, and there are many others. As board members, we knew this was happening. You must protect the school system, and you must separate yourself from the employees, and you must conduct a comprehensive investigation so that the system can be brought back into balance and compliance with your existing policies. I hope you will take this advice on board.
Thank you very much, Peter. Kara Filbin, followed by Gail Lauritsen.
Hi, I'm speaking as a parent. For the first, for the past year and a half, I've been trying to warn people, and it took a PV video to prove it true. The GPS leadership, District, GEA, BOE, PTAC, the Greenwich Alliance, and League of Women Voters are all working together, engaging in discriminatory practices, politicizing our schools, over-sexualizing our children, and embedding transformative SEL, the new SEL, into our core academics. You're pushing all of this, but you are not helping. Instead, you are harming our children and families. I know because at Western, in an attempt to teach suicide prevention, instead, they taught kids to go into their parents' medicine cabinet and take too many pills, and how to find the veins in your wrists, in their wrists. These programs thought to be helping children have morphed into misguided, twisted versions of their original self. It's not a surprise that suicide rates are up for 18 and under, given what kids are learning in these misguided programs. When parents email the school to have the SEL curriculum sent home, the principal replies with legalese that parents can't receive second-step proprietary materials to be utilized with students. This curriculum does not go home, but is handed out and collected. I gave a BOE speech. If you can't or won't send learning materials home, don't teach it. Shame on the BOE for not doing their job to review and approve curriculum. And if administration respected families and kids, you wouldn't sign a contract preventing curriculum from being sent home. Our families and children deserve better. Our students are underperforming despite being the top-funded district in Connecticut because of poor district BOE and town leadership and a broken system. Soon, our BOE will be rubber-stamping cave state policies. My advice to parents for your older kids? Start a countdown. You're almost out. For your younger kids, don't stick around for the sports and AP classes. Your child's health and well-being are more important. Choose an education for your child that inspires a love of learning. Outschool, homeschool, or find an independent school that partners with parents. Know that most of the private and prep schools have also taken the tainted COVID-19 funding and are pushing transformative SEL and divisive DEI over teaching personal agency. Kimberly Fiorello, who spoke a year ago at a BOE meeting encouraging parents to be vigilant
Thirty seconds.
and works tirelessly to educate our community, hosted Ian Rowe, an immigrant, fair advisor, and Harvard MBA who believes children should be empowered to develop agency. Agency is the force of one's free will guided by moral discernment. According to Rowe, developing agency is the alternative to the debilitating blame-the-system-and-blame-the-victim narratives. It transcends our political difference and beckons all who dare to envision lives unshackled by present realities.
Time. Thank you, Kara. Gail Lauritsen, followed by Amy Moose.
Good evening. When you do surveys, when you do surveys, collecting families' personal data to determine the climate in the public schools, do you ask how they feel about teachers who are handpicked adherents to the blind group think? Make no mistake. The climate within the walls of our schools is a direct reflection of the climate out in the community. Our community is aware of the comments Mr. Boland made freely to an undercover journalist. He does not represent and has damaged our town. At a minimum, a public vote should be taken to make his leave unpaid effective immediately. Mr. Boland brought to light a practice of indoctrination that fundamentally does not belong in schools and which is not surprising to many who have remarked on it in this very room for the past two years. Board members, it is time to open your ears. Ignoring your constituents has resulted in town-wide embarrassment. I dare say, this is not who we are. Board members, you may be tempted to believe it's enough to release a statement that discrimination and political indoctrination are not our policy. We've reached a point where we need assurances. We need to see that enforceable action is taken to require our teachers to teach fundamentals. They are not paid to fill our children's heads with personal ideology. And the content of our school's curriculum must be carefully scrutinized. All controversial, racist, sexualized, and frivolous content must be replaced with academics. With nearly with nearly 60% of our students performing below grade level, the status quo is unacceptable. This is a wake-up call to parents who think Dr. Jones is doing a good job. In some ways, she is. But in light of record poor student performance and a nationwide administrative embarrassment, how can any thinking person just accept all is okay? Our job is not to protect Dr. Jones, but to ensure she does things she says she's doing. She must be held accountable for her actions. Multiple instances of rogue infractions in the last 18 months are not acceptable.
Thirty seconds.
The fact of those infractions is evidence enough that all is not okay. We cannot accept words alone. Only a truly independent, unbiased, uncompromised investigation will be acceptable. Finally, I want to acknowledge the many excellent teachers in this district who do wonderful things for our children on a daily basis. Their efforts are made more difficult by certain disgraceful people among us. Parents, please remember to give those teachers a lot of love daily. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Amy Moose, followed by Alyssa Vanos.
Hello, Dr. Jones. Excuse me, and Board of Ed members, we are Alyssa Vanos and Emmy Moose, co-chairs of the PTAC Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. We were initially introduced last year as a special committee, but were voted in later this year, later in the year, as a standing committee. We are excited to work with you all, all of the PTAC, the PTA committees, the First Selectmen's Diversity Committee, JOMO, the YWCA, and other Greenwich community organizations. Our mission has not changed. Our, we are committed to fostering an overall sense of belonging within the GPS community by intentionally building relationships and inviting diverse perspectives. The DEI committee will partner with local PTAs to create programs, initiatives, and events that allow for meaningful conversations and lead to clear actions for creating truly, a truly inclusive environment. The DEI committee will collaborate with GPS PTAs to find the most effective ways to partner with all families to help every student reach their full potential. This month, we launched, launched the PTAC DEI website, The Greenwich Culture Collective, where we will offer content that celebrates our multicultural community. We've shared content with the schools for Hispanic Heritage Month with options for activities and events to participate in, and age-appropriate book selections that have been co-curated with the Parrot Library. Going forward, we will look, we will update book collections that are relevant to the Heritage Months and in hopes that all of our parents, teachers, and students can learn more about each other and be more aware of how our commonalities and differences unite us. And finally, we will add to, we will add any events in and around Fairfield County that might bring more of us together in celebration and understanding of different cultures. This information will be shared through each of the local PTA school newsletters. Over the first three months of this school year, our focus will be on ensuring we have reps at every school, partnering with PTAC's Curriculum Enrichment Committee to work toward more diverse curriculum-based opportunities, working with all DEI reps to add content to morning announcements, and collaborating with local organizations in Greenwich around diversity initiatives with all, for all GPS students. We will keep you all updated about other initiatives and longer-term goals at each meeting.
Although we are very optimistic about the steady impact we can have through our school reps, greater impact to our curriculum and school communities can truly only happen with collaboration from the Board of Education and Administration. We appreciate that pushing ahead with new and diverse experiences in our current climate can be challenging. But for the long-term benefit of our children to become adults in a multicultural world, we implore a more active approach from the BE, BOE, and Administration. As we stated at previous BOE meetings, we are very excited that GPS have been chosen to receive a gift from Common Circle's Show of Foundation for Dimensions and Testimony, a million-dollar artificial intelligence installation that was well-aligned with our curriculum on the Holocaust and genocide. Ultimately, the barriers that Common Circle's encountered in Greenwich resulted in the organization choosing to partner solely with a White Plains School District, instead, who widely embraced this opportunity across learning disciplines. As seen recently, there are multitude of areas for GPS in the town of Greenwich to focus diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. We are excited to hear how the new state-manded Black and Latino Studies class is doing at GHS. We are thrilled that Connecticut continues to be a leader in diversifying its education by becoming the first state to pass a state-funded mandate to teach Asian-American and Pacific Islander history in public schools at all levels. This requirement is part of a bill Governor Lamont signed into law in May after it passed near unanimously in the Senate and with overwhelming bipartisan support in the House. As the, I, we were, we have been
They signed up separately. Please continue.
As the requirement will take effect in 2025, we are eager to hear how GPS is going to move ahead in its development. We continue to encourage diverse and transparent hiring practices in order to increase representation across all races, religions, cultures, gender, and sexual orientation. Sure. To advance educational equity and consistency across GPS, we encourage the district to strengthen assured experiences in all schools. We can further combat socioeconomic-based disparity in our children's education by formulating strategies to incorporate more curriculum enrichment across the board, regardless of individual school PTA budgets. We continue to encourage the Board of Education to increase accessibility to your meetings. These meetings are important and affect all families with and without hearing, sight, and language needs. The ability to provide in-person resources would be so beneficial. Of note, we will highlight, for those of you who don't know, that recorded BOE meetings are placed on YouTube with the option of assessing, accessing a multitude of languages. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We encourage you all to attend Mark Brackett's presentation on Ruler and the Importance of Emotional Intelligence on Tuesday, October 5th. We hope we hope you all explore and celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. For those of you celebrating Rosh Hashanah next week, we wish you all a sweet and happy New Year. As a parent, I would like to use the rest of my time to say that we support our
Thirty seconds.
superintendent and the administration, and that we hope that everybody in this room will use the same respect we have used to listen to you speak that you have, have poorly done listening to us. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up, Janet McMahon, followed by Jamie Waters.
Good evening. My name is Janet McMahon, and I'm speaking tonight as a parent of two children in Greenwich Public Schools. I'm very pleased to hear the positive results of the school climate survey. Hearing that almost 60% of students in grades three through 12 feel that school is interesting, useful, and important, up from 55% last year is commendable. Similarly, 84% of parents felt they were welcomed partners in their child's learning, and 79% of parents felt there were adequate opportunities to express concerns and opinions about important issues impacting their child. These are incredible metrics that the GPS Administration and staff should be proud of and the GPS community should be celebrating. Instead, there was an ugly partisan rally outside attended by a vocal few who continue to terrorize our teachers, politicize our schools, polarize parents, and derail our school board meetings. During the past eight years, my kids have been in Greenwich Public School system, we've been happy with the academic rigor of the curriculum taught by scores of wonderful teachers. I consider myself an active participant in my children's education, and never once have I suspected or experienced any indoctrination by any teacher or administrator. Neither have I encountered anything remotely close to CRT or any of the political propaganda that these same protesters allege at every single board meeting. Excuse me. It should surprise no one, but the vast majority of this vocal group does not even have kids in the GPS and/or have any kids at all. Indeed, of the 67 Republicans who signed this letter calling to cancel Dr. Jones and Dr. Carabillo, less than a quarter actually have children in our schools. That said, GPS administrators and educators, we see you and we appreciate you. While Mr. Boland's comments were reprehensible and inappropriate, we know that he is an outlier. We know that the vast majority of you are selfless, so, excuse me, are selfless, empathetic souls who sometimes put our own children before yourselves and your own families. We know how thankless your job is most days. Your lesson plans are scrutinized. Every book you assign, every email you send is over-analyzed. It sucks the joy out of teaching and maybe even your spirit sometimes. I know it's difficult, but hang in there. Keep teaching and continue to inspire, guide, and motivate our children. Dr. Jones and Dr. Carabillo, the overwhelming majority of Greenwich Public School parents stands with you. I speak for many when I say that you are doing an excellent job and have weathered so many crises with courage, grace, and wisdom. It's a shame that not even two years ago, those angry few who praised you for allowing our children to return to school in person when most schools around the country were still in lockdown. Do not listen to the noise. Continue to do the good work you've been doing. And if you ever doubt yourself, just look at the
Thirty seconds.
school climate survey. Some of us remember what it was like years ago when we had a revolving door of superintendents. Thank you for bringing back Thank you for bringing back stability and continuity to the GPS leadership. We need you, and we're much better off with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, James Waters, followed by Lorelei O'Hagan. I'm going to ask that everyone please stays quiet during speeches. That's, we do that as a board and we expect the same level of decorum, and that's otherwise, we will have to ask you to go. Thank you, go ahead, James, followed by Lorelei O'Hagan. Excuse me, excuse me. If you cannot be respectful, please leave.
Okay, excuse me. I, I will, I will, there are, please here, I will ask you to leave if you continue, and they will escort you out. So I'm going to ask, we've kept it together. Please be respectful. All right, I think you can go. James, please go, followed by Lorelei O'Hagan. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Ed. I'm James Waters, North Mayanus parent and an Eastern parent now, member of the RTM and a member of the Old Greenwich School Building Committee. Tonight, I speak for myself with inputs from constituents across town. You face big decisions this year, and we thank you for your service. These have been rocky times, and we're all thankful for our great teachers, administrators, and your steady leadership. As I've gathered input, parents repeatedly mentioned four topics. They are: addressing learning loss, making progress on critical school capital projects, enhanced school security, and completing the investigation and taking action on the hidden camera video. COVID learning loss is affecting schools across the nation, including Greenwich. I'm pleased Greenwich is doing far better than most, but we must continue to do more. We shouldn't be content with recovery. We want our students to accelerate on the progress we've made on academic excellence and helping our kids become great citizens. We'll only get there with steady leadership. A surprising number of residents are engaged on school infrastructure. People are tired of crumbling schools. The rebuilding of Central is a top priority, and I encourage you to carefully consider the important need to renovate OGS and JC, make long overdue ADA improvements, and complete Cardinal Field Phase Two, the GHS track, the Western Fields and Cellular Service at GHS. Please work with the BET in advance of approving the FY24 capital budget request. Let's learn from the path, from the past and work to create a path. I'd like to see us avoid controversy through constructive and early dialogue. With a potential capital request of a hundred and thirty million dollars, there will be trade-offs. We'll only get there with steady leadership. Third, thank you for taking action on school security in recent weeks. I was proud to support you in the RTM, where all but six members voted yes. I hope you'll complete the conversation on campus monitors and get those in place. Parents were happy for approval of police patrols and security hardware, but don't want safety monitors kicked down the road. We'll only get there with steady leadership. Finally, please complete a thorough investigation into the hidden camera video and take action. I don't think anyone here supports indoctrination of our kids or hiring discrimination. With a number of ongoing investigations, your provision of due process, transparent parent reporting of the findings, and appropriate action are critical to putting this disgusting event behind us. I thank Dr. Jones for taking on yet another difficult but important assignment, and want to convey my trust in this board's judgment, which have been reasonably earned over the last few years. Please don't let politics sway your judgment and creep further into and around our schools. It's hurting everyone, including our teachers and kids. Let's just do the right thing. While everyone wants their agenda first at the expense of others, please stay focused and keep moving forward. Doing the opposite hurts our schools, our kids, and our town. We are only going to get there with steady leadership.
Time. Thank you very much. Lorelei O'Hagan, followed by Amanda Dombrowski. Is Lorelei here? Is she online? I don't see her online, do you? Lorelei O'Hagan. You don't see her here? Okay, then that's, okay, we will skip her. Amanda Dombrowski, followed by David Lancaster. Do you see either online? Sorry, Amanda Don- Dombrowski? I'm looking. I don't, how about David Lancaster? That's, is that David? Yeah, okay. If, if we see the other two pop up, we can come back, but thank you. Go ahead, David. Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name is Dave Lancaster. I'm a member of the RTM, but tonight I'm speaking solely as a private citizen. I have lived in Greenwich all my life and attended Greenwich schools. Greenwich schools have always enjoyed an excellent reputation. Unfortunately, this is rapidly changing. A growing number of parents are getting wise to unauthorized curricula, agenda-based content, and the lack of transparency and gaslighting from school leadership. Combine this with dropping academic scores, the highest cost per student in the state, and parents are increasingly unhappy. The Project Veritas video validated what many parents in this town have been saying about indoctrination in our schools, with an added revelation of bigotry in its hiring processes. Not only is discrimination in hiring a crime, but guess what? Add this to more bad press about investigations and lawsuits, and Greenwich residents are embarrassed and fed up with the school, what their schools are being portrayed in the news. It's time for the BE to deal with this situation by doing the following. Number one, enforce existing town and state laws regarding hiring. Number two, approve all curriculum as required by your own BE policy. Number three, develop a culture of transparency. Great schools have nothing to hide. Four, expunge all, expunge all agendas from the schools, no matter how clever or their subtlety is and their camouflage, including SCL. Five, get back to basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic so our children can get the academic education they deserve. This is not a Democrat nor Republican issue. The demand for accountability is growing and is coming from an increasingly broader range of political viewpoints. A poll this month in The New York Times from Siena College revealed that seventy percent of its respondents opposed the inclusion of agendas in elementary education, and a solid majority opposed it in middle school, and it was equally divided among parties. These issues are not going to disappear by labeling people who speak out against this as fringe or by hiding the truth and hoping the problems will go away. True academic learning is almost entirely a result of great teachers, which we have, of all ages and backgrounds, and a substantive curriculum devoid of all agendas. I know politicians, especially some in my own party, like to avoid these cultural issues and stick to economics, but if these cultural issues are not addressed now, they will only get worse.
Thirty seconds.
To the point where repairing town, school, and BOE reputation, reputations may not be possible, and the economic, economic life of its citizens will be negatively impacted. This is the time for real leadership and courage. Do what's right for both Greenwich students and the town. Fix this mess finally, or step aside and let someone else do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Katie Yu, followed by Kathleen Brady. Katie Yu, and then Kathleen Brady. There is Katie? Yep, there you are. Okay. And then Kathleen Brady.
Good evening. My apologies, a little bit of a heads up. It's sometimes hard to hear in the back when the names are being read. So I'm sorry for being late. I actually didn't hear that. Okay. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Jones and others. Tonight, I would like to address the consideration of security monitors at the elementary and middle school level. While I'm frankly glad to see the passage of funding to address security at our schools, I am concerned about the two companies that are currently under consideration as security monitors in our schools. I would like to draw attention to the fact that at least one of the security companies only requires that security monitors have the equivalent of a GED in order to be a security monitor. As a longstanding parent in this district, I recall when there were questions about adding SROs at the high school. While I generally have found them to be a positive addition to the overall security at the high school, I feel that it is a mistake to not consider the significant differences between high school students and elementary and middle school kids. I'm sure that any teacher here today will tell you that elementary school kids can be impulsive, sometimes a bit overactive, overactive and boisterous. Teachers at elementary schools understand that in many ways, this is their first time learning about important behaviors, norms, and protocols. And I'm sure that middle school teachers will add to that the natural changes that occur with middle school kids behaviorally, hormonally, I'll leave it at that. Add to the fact that our teachers have received training to understand the needs of all students, including those with IEPs and behavior plans. And as educators, they are coming from a place of wanting to educate and engage with their kids. Should we assume that this will be exactly the same starting point for monitors? And can we assume that this will be the case if there isn't adequate training and a baseline educational level? In summary, I would like there to be consideration of this. While I understand the importance of being fiscally prudent, I think it is just as important that our district partners with a company that understands and is familiar working with a wide range of kids. I hate to mention this, but as we've seen with our recent issues occurring with our new cost savings with the bus partners, sometimes you get what you pay for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Kathleen Brady, followed by George Shuriba.
Members of the board and Dr. Jones, my name is Kathy Brady. I'm here today as a GPS parent to thank the board and Dr. Jones for their dedication and commitment. The first time I met Dr. Jones was early in her tenure, when she came to the first church in Old Greenwich to listen and address parent concerns regarding special education. The meeting went on for hours as various parents talked of their concerns. While everyone was seated, Dr. Jones stood for the duration, in heels and a suit, I might add, taking notes and listening to all. I don't recall any other administrator reaching out to the community in this manner. I tell this story because I believe that this is a small example of the work that Dr. Jones has done to understand and serve the school district, and most importantly, the children. What I have seen is a superintendent who operates with integrity, grace, and a can-do attitude. She has been the superintendent for three years, during which she has successfully navigated a pandemic, opening the schools and providing badly needed in-person education. I don't think I need to remind people that other districts adjacent to ours were not successful in this endeavor. She runs a school district with fifteen schools, eighty-six hundred students, and thousands, thousands of employees. Prior to her arrival, we had over thirteen superintendents in over twenty years. Each time progress was made, a superintendent would leave, and we would start again. Needless to say, the constant turnover was not productive to long-term planning, and she has been a strong and stabilizing force. The current investigation regarding the COSCO vice-principal is obviously necessary and important, and needless to say, it was shocking. I want to thank the board for their service and ask the board members to let the investigation play out, have all the answers, get all the facts. Don't shoot first and ask questions later. Now's the time to show support for the whole of the student body, for Dr. Jones and Dr. Cabella as well, to operate in the best interest of all, not just the noisiest. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up, George Shuriba, followed by Cara Mendelson. Is George here? I don't see him online. No. Is that you, George? No. No, you're just a kid trying to leave. Okay. So I see Cara Mendelson online, so let's go to, let's call her up then. Sorry, and then Nerlin Pearson after that.
Ms. Mendelson, you can unmute and speak, please.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Cara Mendelson, and I have four kids in Greenwich Public Schools, two at Greenwich High, one at Eastern, and one at North Mayanus. My husband and I also grew up in Greenwich and attended public schools here. I am a PTA president, but I am speaking tonight as an individual. I am here to express my total gratitude for our schools and the work their teachers, administrators, and coaches do every day. It's impressive. My kids are learning amazing things in a supportive and challenging environment. They love going to school. That's all I can ask for. Thank you to Tony for your leadership. Thank you to our administrators, and thank you to our teachers.
Thank you, Cara. Next up, Nerlin Pearson, followed by Jennifer Kuta. Is Nerlin here, or is she online? Let me look one second. I don't, I don't, I thought I saw you here, but no. Nerlin Pearson? No. Okay, then going next. Jennifer Kuta, followed by Jill Oberlander. Raise your hand if you're online. I'm looking for Jennifer Kuta.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Jennifer.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. My name is Jennifer Kuta, and I'm one of the parents who has spent the last five years speaking at Board of Education meetings on the subject of special education. As a result of my outspokenness, my children were retaliated against, and there were many false statements made about myself, my husband, and my children. I am also one of the parents who signed a 104B complaint. I spoke at almost every BET meeting, and I was one of many who lobbied hard for an outside independent evaluation on the practices of special education across Greenwich Public Schools. And we were successful in our quest for both an outside audit, independent, and more importantly, for systemic change. But the one constant was that we stayed at the table with Dr. Jones. We may have been on opposite sides, but like any good negotiation, you must be at the table with leadership to effectuate change. I'm here tonight to say that if you judge simply by our actions and the progress we have made in special education in this district, and look at the rogue personnel who are no longer here, you will see that being at the table with Dr. Jones is paramount to positive change. Parents who are here tonight speaking out against Dr. Jones, ask yourselves if you have ever considered sitting down privately at the table with our superintendent of schools. If you haven't, I would suggest that you reconsider your position. And yes, I'm a Republican too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Jill Oberlander, followed by Carl Higby. I think Jill is online.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Dr. Jones, and members of the board, my name is Jill Oberlander, and I'm here to ask you to stay focused on the health and safety of Greenwich students and to reject the ill-founded request to place the superintendent and deputy superintendent on leave. First, I want to thank all of you, and most particularly the teachers, staff, and administrators, including Dr. Jones and Dr. Carabio, for your efforts and dedication over the past two years to keep Greenwich schools open for in-person learning. These are most challenging times, and the work of school staff is saving lives. As we now know from data, in addition to our own experiences and observations as parents, pandemic school closures and distance learning erase several years of learning. The isolation resulting from stay-at-home orders and social distancing delayed critical emotional development for many children. These factors exacerbated the already-recognized teenage mental health crisis. CDC studies conclude that teen emergency room visits for self-harm and eating disorders increased since before the pandemic. These data points should concern all of us. Schools are the frontline defense for children's mental health. CDC studies have found that being connected at school, defined as the sense of being cared for, supported, and belonging, had an important effect on teen mental health. Recent data indicates that youth with connections to teachers and peers were less likely to report feelings of sadness, hopelessness, and thoughts of suicide. Of the youth surveyed, the CDC found that a majority did not feel connected at school. GPS's strategic plan materials on tonight's agenda highlights the need to increase the percentage of students who report feeling school connectedness, and its own data suggests that twenty-twenty-two percentages are below target. I'm a parent and I support giving parents a voice in their child's educational experience through local school board elections and respectful advocacy on school decisions. It is critical that we, as a community, counter personal attacks on teachers and administrators in the name of parental decision-making. These attacks undermine efforts to create a positive environment for student learning and emotional health. with potentially disastrous results to our children who need support. Finally, I want to state, clearly state my support for a welcoming
Thirty seconds.
Unlawful discrimination in hiring cannot be tolerated. I thank you for investigating hiring practice and providing necessary training. Similarly, the politicization of education and mean-spirited singling out of vulnerable students due to their gender identity or selection of reading material is inconsistent with inclusivity. I know you are very thoughtful about these issues and realize the importance your response will have to the health and safety of students.
Time. Thank you very much. Next up Carl Higbee, followed by Dan Quigley.
All right, so here we are again. I never got that survey, by the way. I certainly wouldn't give you any straight A's on that one. But I'd like to point out that the vocal few, because we outnumbered the people who were, I don't know what they were for, or we can't tell what they were for, but we outnumbered you by a factor of five. Okay, so I'd also like to commend Tony Jones that you have messed up so royally that you have deemed the town necessary to send a dozen cop cars and 20 cops to a Board of Ed meeting. Great job. Okay, I'd like to remind everybody here that she makes the same salary in total comp as the President of the United States, $400,000. Okay? Look, everybody here loves teachers on both sides of this argument. The problem is not with the teachers. For me, I've written four books. Most people don't know I could read, but every single one of those books, every single one of them attributes some lesson in my life to a teacher in the Greenwich Public School system because they were awesome. The administration is not. Now, we talk about all these things that were against. What we're against is, you know, the problem is, is there is no, there's no top cover for this, and every time it is, it's, oh, it's a mishap, it's an oversight. Because this is what we stand for here. We're not some fringe group. We're not domestic terrorists. We're parents. I have two soon-to-be-three kids in this public school system. We want appropriate education, reading, writing, arithmetic. Teach my kid how to put an astronaut on the moon. Maybe even teach him how to do laundry. We used to do that. We don't do that anymore. Teachers, we want them free from discrimination. If you're discriminated against as a teacher, it is not a safe environment for you. How can our kids have a safe environment if that's not the case? We have the highest-paid teachers in the state. We should expect the highest test results in the state. I think that's fair. What are we against? We're against things like, you know, content that our kids are being taught that is so bad that when we print out the content on signs, you don't allow us to bring it into this auditorium. Am I crazy? We don't want open discrimination against religious groups in there, like this guy you had from COSCO who somehow got a shout-out as a great administrator before that. All right, we don't want our second graders shown erections in schools. I mean, that should have been a no-brainer. But you know, a teacher tried to erase mothers and fathers. They would, ooh, it's important grown-ups say. Are you kidding me? This is such garbage. I am so fed up with this stuff, and the fact that we have to come here and be all pissed off with signs and hundreds of people.
Thirty seconds.
You know, like, we just don't want the over-sexualization of our children. We're against critical race theory. We're against all this other stuff. Teach my kids reading, writing, and arithmetic. You gotta get rid of these turds because they're not helping the solution. Again, everybody here supports our teachers on both sides. We don't support the administration. You no longer get the benefit of the doubt. You now have to prove to us that you're doing right by our kids.
Thank you. Next up, Dan Quigley, followed by our last speaker, Erin Chang. I think Dan is online.
Yeah.
Can you hear him? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Dan.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Go ahead, please get started.
Great. Thank you, Chairwoman Stowe, Board of Ed members, Dr. Jones, people in the audience. Not often I get the honor of following Carl Higbee up, but tonight I got to do that, so that's great. I just wanted to say words of support for the Board of Ed members. You guys have an extremely difficult task. You do not get paid for what you do. You put in countless hours into the well-being, health, and safety and good education of our children. And for it, you get a lot of flack and not many, many thank-yous and much appreciated. So first off, I want to thank you for your work you do. For Dr. Jones, Dr. Jones and I have had disagreements in the past on, on issues, but I have always said that of all the things a superintendent could have done the last two years in any town in America, getting our kids back to school as quickly and effectively and efficiently as she did is something that I'll be forever indebted to her for. I have a third grader. He has done really well at Julian Curtis, and we applaud your efforts in getting our kids back to school during unprecedented pandemic. As for the latest issue with the video and the recording of Mr. Boland, there's not one person I've met, Republican, Democrat, liberal, conservative, who applauds what he said. Nobody does. It's across political boundaries. It was repugnant. It was not something that our school system stands for. It was not something that is indicative of how our administrators should behave. And my anticipation is, once an investigation is done, this will be discovered to be not an endemic situation, but something that is particularly related to one person. I do not believe that his words are representative of the administrators, teachers, and superintendent or assistant superintendent at all. And I think the means by which that information was procured has to be factored into the discussion. I believe there should be an investigation. There will be an investigation. And upon that full investigation being completed, there is no reason to consider punishing anyone until an investigation is done. Education has been politicized throughout our country. This is a national movement. This is not a local movement. This has been called for over a year ago to get this done. If you want to change and take your country back, you go through your school boards. So this is something we have to get used to in our society. But I just want to reiterate, Dr. Jones, I think you've done a good job. Continue doing it. Continue pushing forward. Board of Ed members, do what you were elected to do. Get our kids educated well, keep them safe, and keep them in good hands. Godspeed.
Thank you. Next up Erin Chang. Is Erin here? Oh, sorry, Ms. O'Hagan's back online. She, okay, we just skipped her while we're waiting for Erin. Put Lorelei on, and then Erin will be our last speaker from the list.
Great, thanks for giving me an opportunity. Hi, everyone. I'm Lorelei O'Hagan, and thank you to the Board of Ed and everyone in the room. I had a feel-good story that I wanted to share at the end. I'm a parent of a kindergartner, and I just wanted to make it very, you know, bring the story to everyone that's in the room. After all of the efforts that have gone on from parents involved in the special ed community, and teachers, and everyone who was involved in really hearing the issues that people were having with the special ed program over time and really demanding change, I am now the beneficiary at COSCO School of the first co-teaching model for kindergarten. And I just wanted to express my gratitude for everyone in the community really understanding that we have so far to go in terms of really understanding and delivering the special ed services that we really deserve. And there are a lot of steps that we need to take. But right now, I have a kindergartner who has ADHD, because my older son has ADHD as well, and he is really doing well in this class. It's going to be such an amazing opportunity for us to understand how can we deliver the kind of services that we want, filtering and screening for things like dyslexia, which my older son has, he's in fourth grade. And we're going to really be able to catch some of these things and address them early on. I am so thrilled to be in this program. It's a pilot. And I wanted to thank everybody in this room and give everybody a pat on the back for really saying, what can we do? How can we take evidence-based solutions from other places? Who's doing it really well, and how can we implement that and put that into our program? So I am so pleased. I'm saying thank you for that. I also did just want to mention briefly in terms of the discrimination discussions that are going on. I wanted us to be taking a look at some of the issues that we have. Discrimination is real, and it's an issue that we are facing, and I would like to say, let's take an opportunity to learn from this moment and say, we actually have a discrimination problem in our community. In fact, there was a Board of Ed discussion, some of you who are in this room right now, who were not wanting to vote on Title IX. And that was an issue of discrimination against trans people. So I want us to be able to say, yes, discrimination is a problem, and we need to do a better job about it, right? The other issue is that we have ADHD, schools that are not ADHD compliant. That's an issue of discrimination. We also have segregated schools that don't meet the standards
Thirty seconds.
of our community for diversity. We also don't have an administration and a teaching staff overall that reflect the diversity of our community. So we do have work to do. So let's not be distracted by this one issue of these very loud squeaky voices complaining about sort of a made-up problem.
Time.
And let's actually
Thank you very much. Please don't be disrespectful. Thank you. Karen is taking the clock. Karen can handle the time. Thank you very much. The last speaker is Erin Chang. Is Erin Chang here? Okay, well, then that concludes our public comment. We, um, just, no, that's an hour as well. Everyone, if you sign up. So now we, I just want to let you know, we are going to, I'm going to ask for a motion in a moment to go into executive session. I don't know how long that'll be. It's about safety and security. We're meeting with the chief of police. It's obviously very important. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go home and tune back in. When we start, when we come back, we'll be addressing committee reports, which includes the superintendent's report. I suspect during that time, we will talk about things like start of school, buses, and the investigation. But I did want to let you know that we now have, I need a motion to go into executive session. So move. Can I have a second, Karen? All right, can we, a show of hands to go into executive session? That passes eight-zero. Thank you.
I'm not on. Okay, here we are. Thank you. We are back. We had our next up, we had an action item on safety and security, but there is no action at this time. So we will move on to our monthly reports. Um, we're still, it's still, it's an ongoing discussion and there's no, yeah. Well, we're gonna have, we have to limit what we say at this time. So, so we are. Yeah. Yeah, yes, absolutely. We went to executive session with the chief of police and the conversations are ongoing and we hope to have something that we bring back very quickly and we'll take action on as a board then, but not this evening. Thank you. So with that, we're going to go into monthly reports. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. First of all, starting the year, I just, I can't express how great it feels to be out in the schools and see such a high level of energy and just the, the great work that's going on. Just as a reminder, one of the fun things that we're rolling out this year is foundations for third grade. And that's just been great to see because those third graders had foundations in kindergarten first, second. And when I was out in one of the buildings, the principal was saying it's the teacher's learning curve because it's their first time, but the children are able to really help them just with the whole process because this is their fourth year. We also have our new sixth, seventh and eighth grade ELA and social studies curriculum. And I was out in actually Central this morning and that's also great to see rolling out and will continue, of course, to have lots of collaboration with teachers on that. I would say the two challenges, there are two that right now I think are front and center in our mind. I'm going to talk about transportation first. We do have a brand new company this year. Last year was the end of our contract. We had to go back out to bid. When we went out to bid, we ended up selecting this company. They worked through the summer, had the route scheduled, had the right amount of drivers during the summer. We didn't find out till Wrightman School was literally starting. There, they were apparently bought and sold by another bus company. So they have experienced some challenges where drivers are jumping from one company to the other. There's such a driver shortage in Connecticut. So that definitely has impacted them. There are other issues as well. We meet on it every single day and Dr. Kara below was in a call again, in the meeting again today, basically with their CEO. What I can say is, you know, of course we're apologetic. You can only apologize so many times for buses not picking students up. So we fully understand why parents are upset about that. We've got it isolated down now to pretty much a few buses. It's mainly at the high school. We're working on an alternate solution and we're doing that by also working on the flexibilities of the contract and a performance aspect of the contract with our town legal. And how we can utilize perhaps other resources to make sure that not only can we run our school buses, but also things like athletics. We're currently using a different provider for athletics, but again, it's definitely been a challenge. So I, I will say that about transportation, but we're almost there. We have a few, we have another solution that we're putting in place right now, which we hope is going to help. The last item would be with cost Cobb. And I said this in the note that I sent to cost Cobb families, letting them know that we were putting in basically an acting position for their assistant principal because the parents had really asked about that. And that's Karen Vitti. And in that same notification, I let them know that we are currently going through the internal investigation. And we also have been notified by the attorney general, by their office, that they are starting an inquiry as well as the town is also narrowing down, I believe their finalists for who they want to do a town investigation. But I, I'm not going to be able to give answers quickly. Whenever you are in an investigation such as this, the legal precedence has to, has to take place. And there are people do have due process rights and it can take weeks and sometimes months. So that's what we've shared with the cost club community. On the internal, it is Dr. Bud who manages that. We don't actually have any participation in that. The HR department is, is managing that aspect.
I'd like to add to that just because I haven't, I was lucky enough to join something called the special operations committee yesterday, which was something that Fred Camillo and Ben Branyan have started. It's actually pretty interesting. It's a public meeting, although it was really just us. From there we, and they actually brought together like Dan Oz's mayor, myself, Alexis Vulgaris and Margarita Albin from PNZ. Anyway, in that Fred did provide me an update. And that is that they're very close. And then Barbara Schellenberg, who also is the town attorney, provided me the same that the town is very close to hiring an independent investigator. They, of course, themselves have to use outside counsel. So they are doing that. It is a costly process. So they are figuring that out right now. And I think they're hopeful to announce that in the next couple of days. And like I said, they are, I think they're figuring out the scope and all that, but they are expecting to announce that in the next couple of days. And then of course we'll cooperate with them and their efforts quite like we're doing the attorney general and the Connecticut State Department of Education. But that is kind of where that stands and hopefully we'll hear a day or two. He did not share that with me now. I imagine we'll learn that after they have picked their outside counsel.
I was just wondering that the, what about as far as with the, the state investigations? Have they been, Tony, have they been in contact with us?
That is the attorney general's office. They reached out, just basically opened the inquiry, had an in-person meeting several hours long. We are expecting that they will issue a subpoena, could be anytime, to tell us exactly which documents they want us to preserve and provide to them.
Actually sticking on that same subject, I also think the Department of Education had announced something as well. Is that being, have they been in contact and what's the status of that?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. Jonathan, Dr. Bud could be, but I'm not aware of anything right now. We just have his internal investigation. We have the attorney general investigation. And then the town of Greenwich, who's trying to hire the independent investigator.
And what is Dr. Bud's investigation covering?
Yeah, I'm not at liberty to talk about the investigation right now. All I can say is that he is investigating and he's coming to it from a human resources aspect from the employee standpoint. So he's, he's literally in the middle of that right now.
Okay. So if I can just switch to a different topic, you had mentioned that the ELA, the new ELA curriculum for sixth, seventh and eighth grade was rolling out. And I was curious as to how we're defining curriculum, because my understanding is that curriculum needs to come to the board for approval pursuant to policy sixty-one, sixty-one, I believe. And the question is, that didn't come to the board. So the question is, what is the curriculum that's being rolled out because the board hadn't proved it?
Yeah, it's, and that's my fault. It's not really curriculum. Our curriculum are the standards. They're actually called lesson plans. And I was looking at actually the history today. And it's how you take those standards and making sure that all of the teachers have resources, materials available to them that are issued by the district, not where they're just looking at the standards and they have to go out and find their own materials. But it's, it's basically a lesson plan concept, which I know the curriculum team talked about last year and it went through the curriculum committee as well.
Ms. Downey?
Do you want to start? Tell me when committee reports.
I'm ready. Oh, do you have another question?
Well, I had a question on another topic. And I know we're going to be getting it up for Dr. Jones. I know we're going to be getting an update on Western's fields and central middle school. But I'm hoping that you might be able to give us a little bit of an update of what's going on at the high school with their fields because we've lost a lot of parking spots. We have a lot of very frustrated and upset individuals over that. And they keep in, seems to be encroaching further and further. And they've looked like they're not as far ahead as I had thought we would be at this point. So I was wondering if you had an update.
And they are actually right on schedule. And I know it's hard. It's been really hard for Greenwich High School because I believe at the PTA meeting, we said it was about a hundred spots that they've lost right now. That will, once they're able to move that all offsite and get the fields rebuilt, you know, they, they will move those vehicles and they'll get that space back. But it, it could be the spring before we see that. But that's better than going another entire summer and having to close everything down on the campus again. So they're working as quickly as they can. It's a huge project at the high school.
And just so we're clear, we're going to, you think we're going to be done and have that field, those fields back, at least in service by next year at least? I know we got these fields back partially in the middle of the spring season last year, but the other, you know, just was wondering.
Yes, we should have them back next year for sure.
And might I make additional request that, or note that we might need to add some signage at the Cardinal Stadium? The signs that said no dogs on campus, et cetera, seem to not be there. And I watched numerous dogs using our fields as a laboratory the other day, not on the fields, but you know, back behind. So, thank you.
Okay, committee reports? Go ahead, Ms. Downey.
I'm just reporting on the GHS entryway, which we, the committee has met. We've gone back to the architect. He's given us a fee structure to move forward with revised plans. And at this point, we are going to get a presentation the first week of October with a couple of possible renderings, drawings. And Joe, I know you like a rendering, maybe you'll want to come for some suggested alternatives to the project to keep it within the budget from a design basis. And then the committee will make a decision. And we'll see what needs, it'll obviously have to come back to us because we have design approval.
Joe?
I briefly spoke of a virtual net metering. So I wanted to prepare everybody for, we're going to start getting closer to that. What it is is we're partnering up or considering partnering up with a solar development company where they're going to take, it's a government subsidized project that we're entitled to some subsidies. The subsidies are directed to this company that will be building a solar array, a solar system somewhere upstate Connecticut. They have some deals with some farmlands they're working with. What we have to be prepared to do, the legal side is looking at this right now, but we have to be prepared to do is make a twenty-year commitment to ever source. What we'll be doing is right now, we get all our electricity from ever source. If we make this twenty-year commitment with no financial commitment to the solar development company, we will be reimbursed up to twenty to twenty-five percent of our annual electricity costs for the next twenty years. Those numbers are quite big. And where Abby's looking at the, the documentation now, we've had several meetings with the, the solar development company. It's a real project. We had met with some, some state official, state government officials to verify that it is a very legitimate opportunity for us to offset our, our footprint, our, our consumption of electricity by that same amount created by a renewable source. So it's a kind of a cool project and also saves us up to twenty to twenty-five percent. So the only commitment we have is we have to be prepared to, to make a twenty-year commitment to ever source. So we have to do a little research on that. That's the only commitment we have to that. Also, a second project is, which we talked briefly about before, is the, the broadcast room in the stadium, the extra press box. Sean Mayo, Ralph Sun is running that project for us. He's looking at the equipment. Jamie Andrea and the family are donating some, a pretty good sum of money for him to, to have this equipment for a classroom, a broadcast classroom at the stadium. So they're narrowing down the list of things they want. We have to discuss the donation. We, hopefully we could put it on the gen, the agenda. We'll talk about it later because Sean would like to talk about it briefly. And Jamie, also in honor of her, her, her husband who passed. So, so that's, that's what I got. Thanks.
Laura, while I'm looking at you, you want to do central middle school?
Sure. So I can tell you that we put out requests for proposals for an owner's rep and for an architect. We got eight proposals back, which were opened today. There will, there will be interviews for the committee to participate in on October fourth. On October twenty-ninth, we anticipate opening the bids that we were hopefully going to get back from the architects. There was a very robust response to our RFP and we had, I want to say over twenty people do a walk through here a week or so ago. Our building committee media, meeting on nine twenty-seven will be an executive session. Will be, you know, discussing scoring and our scoring individually of the, of the individual responses for an owner's rep. So that's where we are. And hopefully we'll just keep moving ahead at a, full speed ahead for us, I guess.
Yeah, Karen?
I had a question about one of the committees that had spoken. The D E N I committee? How did that come about and who's on it and what is their role and function?
It's a PTAC committee.
It's a PTAC. It has nothing to do with us. It's the PTAC.
Some PTA council, their committee.
Okay, so they, it has nothing to do with the Board of Ed?
Zero. Okay, go ahead.
I was going to give an update on CAC. And while I was unable to attend their first meeting of the year, Michael Joseph did. So at least one of us was, was able to be there. They basically just sort of went over things that were happening for the year as well as revising some of their bylaws for a few things. But they wanted to ensure that we all were aware that they're looking for people who are interested in becoming members. They are very open, transparent. Information is certainly out there. They have space for three parents, two educators and one related service provider. Some of those would be voting members and some would be alternates. But they really wanted to ensure that parents and other members of our educational community here that wanted to be involved know that they are open and looking. And all of their meetings are, you know, open for attendance, even if you are not, you know, a, you know, a voting member or an alternate. They also voted in new, two new working committees. They do not have names for them, but they are looking into behavior management strategies. And looking into the consistency of services and service delivery and case management across schools for consistency. And they are sort of looking also to figure out the best ways that they can help to support the mental health of all of our students overall. As there is definitely a need, an increased need this year, and they are more than aware of that. But their next meeting will be in November. They are going to have some parent forums and other things. I know Dr. Stacy will be sharing some of those with us when she gives her update as well. So that's it from CAC.
Cody?
I have my Greenwich, Greenwich Alliance board update. Three updates. They awarded seventy-five thousand dollars in scholarships to thirty-eight avid graduates in college. That brings total scholarship awards to seven hundred thirty-four thousand. Update number two, the VR AR STEAM camp at Western taught by Gus Spar, thank you. Lapari was a huge success. This camp built upon the equipment and software investment made by the alliance, which was a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. It expanded the reach to students outside of Western. And then third, reaching out grant spending for twenty-two, twenty-three was significant over the summer and it included equipment purchases for cost Cobb and Western. Equipment purchases for COSCOB and Western sensory rooms, the HAMAV outdoor classroom. Old Greenwich School Way and the Old Greenwich School Wave Broadcast Station.
Great. Also Barbara O'Neil, who just sent me an email. I was reminded of the fact that she's on the old Greenwich Building Committee. And she would like the public to know that we need one more person that has construction experience. So if any of the people listening online would like to apply for that job, that would be fantastic and you do that through the Selectmen's Office.
And construction means not constructing with Legos, correct?
Just checking. You could do whatever you'd like.
Just checking.
Who is the board representative on the Old Greenwich Building Committee?
Not chosen yet. We had to do that. I have to do that and JC. Yeah. So, but they, the building committee reps, the select, the ones that the Selectmen chose, right? For OG and JC were approved on Monday night at the RTM meeting. Okay, so with that, why don't we start our meeting? We are now going to our first discussion item. Summer School Executive Summary, which I know we all listened to the video. So. Dr. Caravella, do you want to just come up here and we can shoot some questions at you?
Thank you. Yes, questions? No hands?
Karen.
On, I don't know what page it's on, but it talks about math achievement for GPS versus Julian Curtis. It talks about. A 22% growth rate versus a 45% growth rate. How are you measuring the, the growth rates between? Those two different situations? And I assume you mean the Julian Curtis Summer School Program that's run exclusively through there versus. All of Greenwich Public Schools that's run separately.
That's correct. So what we have found is that, and we found this last year as well. Those students that went to their own school with their own teachers. And, and attended at least 80% of the time. Did much better, had much better performance than those students that went to the GPS. Summer School because they did not have their own teacher. So what we found is that if we could have the luxury of doing. Summer School at each school with their own teachers, then I think we could really make some positive differences, but. We can't require the teachers to teach in their own school with their own kids in the summertime, but. That's something that maybe we can keep increasing every year.
Yeah, but my point goes, what are you looking at to measure the growth? Like where you, what, what, what tools are you using? That distinguishes between the growth of the kids that went to summer school versus, and I assume it's just the kids that went to summer school as opposed to a broader community?
Yeah, it's just the kids in summer school. Michael Reed gave us some assessments to use from Big Ideas and that's what we used as a pre-test and a post-test.
And you're testing them at the beginning of when they enter summer school versus when they exit summer school?
Correct.
Ms. Downey?
Thanks, yeah, thanks, Anne. Oh, hi. So to, to, two points, the one about Julian Curtis. So. Are you already in the planning for next summer in terms of thinking about how you, like, what's the timeline and the process for planning for next year? Because if you found that this model was so successful. Are you already kind of trying to put, see what wheels we put in motion? Is it too soon or what should we be anticipating? And I have a follow-up question, which is unrelated.
So it's really a little too soon. We usually start in January. We have to find out what buildings are available first. And that has a big impact on how many students we can have, where we can have it. And then we would have to ask which administrators would be willing to be their site supervisor. And which teachers would be willing to work in their own schools with their own children. So it's a little early yet, but we have been thinking about that and if we could do it, it would be great. But, you know, we have a lot of construction and repairs in our buildings during the summer.
But was our capacity higher by doing it this way, having kind of the campus and then the Julian Curtis special? Did we increase our capacity? Or what, or did we just have a smaller capacity somewhere else?
More capacity. We had fewer students this year.
We had fewer students. Okay. And then just about the tutoring, I just a question which you said was very well. Received if we, if done early. How did we do that on a cost bait? Did we charge for it? How did we?
We do not charge for any ESY students or any students that we invite. To attend summer school because they are lowest performing students.
Okay.
The only ones who are charged are our students who take accelerated student classes or secondary students.
So for example, we would have invited a student to come and he or she would say, you know what? I don't really want to come, but I'll do the tutoring. As kind of a lesser option in terms of time commitment based on whatever's going on.
And that was a fabulous idea from Dr. Jones.
Yeah, so we're going to.
Worked out great.
So can we expand capacity for that next summer? I mean.
Again, it depends on the space. And it depends on how many literacy specialists that we can have because that was our focus this year for primary grades.
Because it looked like, I mean, particularly in K and one on literacy that was massively successful, just at least based on the test results. Thank you.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
So that was, I had a similar question about tutoring. First of all, I'm thrilled that we're doing it because obviously. The numbers align here. It was working. Wasn't clear to me, 33 is that if that was the capacity in the program or if we were limited by. The capacity in the program or we're limited by families interested in attending.
Families interested in coming.
That's what I, so what was the, what kind of capacity did we have this summer?
Well, we had, we had it from eight o'clock until 10 o'clock and we didn't have many students coming at the nine to 10 hour. So we would change that this year, next year to eight, nine.
Oh, that, I, I was, that makes sense because that, that matches on the. The general summer school attendance, you know, you see attendance number 65%, 75% and clearly students are. Who are in the summer school more were more successful. That made me wonder. What we're doing or if we need to do more or how we can think differently about communicating the importance of summer school and. The importance of attendance and all these things and.
We, we do really stress that we need to have our students there every day. But sometimes children don't. They want to just go play and sometimes parents just want their children to have a different experience during the summer. We do have many parents that do have their children go to camps because it's very important, especially with COVID. They want their children to be able to play, to. Socialize again. So it's really parental choice. We can't force them to come, but. We highly encourage them to participate.
Of course, I guess I just wonder if there's more and maybe there isn't, but if there's more we can do as far as sharing this data when we're having those personal conversations with families.
It's a good idea. We will keep that in our, our thoughts for January.
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
So no, I had sent a whole bunch of questions, so I'm just going to add it and it is.
Yes, you did.
Sorry, in advance. Well, that's what we're supposed to do.
Absolutely, and I appreciated it.
Yeah, so I know that, you know, I had asked how many, you know, our students were offered the tutoring option. I know you'd said, you know, it was offered for grades K four. It was invited, it was offered to all of the student, all of the students that were invited, but 33 ended up attending. And much like Michael Joseph here, I was going to say the same thing. I know we're adding. Another parent teacher conference and I think maybe that would be a nice opportunity for students who are lagging a little bit behind. To have an opportunity to, to. Talk about this option. As you said, there are a lot of students who, parents who don't want their students in school all day, every day, all through the summer. They want to be able to have the opportunity to do other things, but. This tutoring option may not have been as well known and could be a really wonderful option. And I think one-on-one. Attention sometimes really is, it, it will help in other things that were for our strategic plan, which we'll be talking about later, making that connection. With a student, a parent, an adult in the building, you know, and connecting with families as well. So.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
I was just going to make that suggestion. And the other question I had was, I know we talked about GC and the homeschool being important. I know I'd asked you. Since it was so successful in seeing growth in those students that were able to attend their home school. If we had considered it, at least for some of the other schools that are lagging a little bit behind in their achievement data and scores, which I could, we'll be talking about another week or two. Or some of our other Title One schools. I know Western at one point had looked to do it as well. I think they were a home site anyway this year.
They did, they did it for their own students last year, but this year. They did not have the same, the same volunteerism for teachers to do summer school from Western. Besides which, we took the building over, so they couldn't have done it anyway. Actually, they probably could have, but this. It would have been very hard for the custodians with the work that was being done there as well as having the room so that they could clean.
Well, again, that leads us back to tutoring and hopefully students, you know, we can talk to them about that because. Maybe they would have the option. It's for teachers who would maybe would be interested in tutoring if they couldn't get into their own buildings. Could work with some of their additional students and would make some nice connections and see some more growth there.
Thank you. Just a thought. It's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, Karen.
I just have two more questions. One, was there similar data for seeing anything with respect to the English? Growth level because there's, there's literacy components and then there's a math component for summer school. So was there similar data for, on the literacy side?
So what we did is we used the early literacy star assessment for our K two students and then we used the regular star reading assessment. We did a pre and a post.
So did you see similar growth between?
Between JC. JC had higher growth than our regular general summer school program.
Sorry, I just didn't understand the slide. And then the other question I had was respected a tutoring. What was, what is the ratio between tutor and student for that period of time?
It was a three to one.
Any other questions on this topic? Okay, Karen.
Wasn't a question, it was a comment. I know that the board for years has talked about. Ways to improve summer school, not having students that attend for things that they don't need to be there for and dividing things up. So. I just want to say just the numbers that we're seeing here and having the opportunity to have kids come in to be tutored, all the different opportunities that they're being offered. Thank you for kind of taking that look and reimagining in some ways our summer school program. I know Michael Joseph mentioned. That there's maybe some other great ways to do that too, and I look forward to having that discussion, but I just wanted to thank you for that. It could be asked for so long.
Well, it's, it's a team effort, so I appreciate the administration working with us very closely.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Caravella. Next up, 2022 Climate Survey. Dr. Jones, I know Jen is here allow, but I told her she doesn't really have to walk through it, but can you come down so we can? Can you come down so we can answer, ask questions? Thank you. No. I mean, I don't need her to walk it, walk me through it. Are you guys okay if we just go right into questions? That's fine. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Cody, do you have a question? No, you like that style. Okay. All right. Yep. Michael Joseph? Go ahead.
I had one question about the, the risk assessment at the end, the, but just, just a comment. I know. There were some comments tonight about these. The success of this data and the excitement of this data. I, I think we have to acknowledge that there's, there's a lot of growth here. And there's a lot of numbers here that aren't, aren't that great. None of us really should be happy about numbers in the, in the 50% range of when students are saying about. The value of school and student belonging. Obviously, we're going to see the strategic plan in the moment and that's certainly something that we're going to address, but I don't think. We want to give the message tonight that, oh, we all just have to pat ourselves on the back and say, great job. There's a lot of, it's a lot of growth here. They, no one, we can't be happy with, with that 58% of our students say. That school is interesting, important and useful. They, so I think, I think we just have to acknowledge that. That said, the, I was, I was hoping you could explain the, the at-risk stats at the back because I was at the back because I wasn't. I wasn't quite clear on the last page, you know, page nine. I wasn't quite clear what we were looking at.
These statistics are generated from our Aspen SIS, which is what I, I manage. And they are the aggregate of specific instances that are reported by the individual schools. As, and you can see that there is a, a significant. Drop in this most recent year as to, I think there was a sub-question which was the difference between the high, medium and low risk. And I actually would defer to Stacy to give you more detail on that.
So the.
Wait. So sorry, but. Actually, I'm not sorry. What are you talking about? What, what is a risk incident? That's, I think that's a fundamental from the very beginning. It's like I'm looking at this saying, well, we had fewer risks, number of incidents, not students in risk incidents. What is that?
So when a school has a concern about a child's mental health or safety, they conduct a risk assessment. That's done by one of our mental health practitioners. So the social worker or the school psychologist. So when they complete that, it goes into Aspen. So we're able to track. By the number of incidents that have occurred. And so this has been practiced for the last several years. So we're able to look at not only last year's data. But some historical data from the years before. And we're able to see how many of those incidences have been needed. And so our staff is really good about tracking that. And they're able to follow up. They put what the incident was, which then classifies how it's, how it's ranked. And then what the follow-up to that is so that we can keep a record to make sure that we're following up with the student.
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Jones.
So this was one of the questions actually that Karen Hirsch also submitted and I think it's just helpful for the board to know that. If you look at regulation 5141.5R, that's the regulation that goes along with the policy, of course, that the, the policy committee put together. And you can see the forms, you can see the detailed process and that was all updated. I believe Stacy at the beginning of last year, that was one of the first.
Correct.
She probably worked on, but you, it gives you a good idea of the, the detail that the staff actually. Put into these risk assessments and how serious, seriously they take them.
Karen.
Yeah, I sent a whole bunch of these questions in too. And much like Michael Joseph, I was going to say, you know, some of these numbers were. I wasn't doing a tap dance at home, reading them. I was a little disappointed. And I, I know that a lot of this is leading us directly into our agenda item later, which is strategic plan and ways to. Ensure our students feel schools' value and then the sense of belonging and our teacher satisfaction rates because that. Is particularly concerning to me. These are the individuals that are walking to the doors every day to make sure that our students are. Happy and feel confident and feel that they belong in their schools. So I'm looking forward to hearing a little bit more how we're going to bring that level up. But I think one of the things that's missing from this and I, you could see from the questions that I asked from somebody who has a marketing background. Is we, we, we talked about how many people responded, but we didn't say how many that was sent out to what percentage and like of students responded. I knew each school beginning individual reports. I kind of look forward to seeing that, but. I didn't have as much time to sort of dig into this, but. The responses, because we got them a little bit before, but I, I think it's sort of important to note that. Elementary school students will not respond the same way to their, how they feel the importance of school is to the way high schoolers are. And. If we have, I mean, I was looking at your answers to me, the only 47% of our high schoolers responded. To some of these surveys. So I think it's really important, not just the data that we're getting back, but trying to see if we can. Ask students, maybe it's the way we're asking it. I, I don't know, but it's so important for us to really. We're seeing more incidence of things. We're talking about risk assessment. While that may be going down, it just, there's more students that we may be missing. We need to make sure that they feel a sense of belonging. We need to find a way to. To, to capture that information from them and make sure that they're. Feeling comfortable and confident. I mean, all the incredible work, I see heads nodding back there. Incredible work that's being done for our curriculum. We want to make sure that our students feel the, feel that too when they walk in the door, that they have a teacher that they connect with. So. You know, I'm not sure what sort of suggestions you have and I'm hoping we have an opportunity to ask some more questions about this. Maybe, you know, down the line when we get a little bit more information from school to school, but I think the best question I can ask you is, you know, how we. We had two thirds of our staff take. you know, how we, we had two-thirds of our staff taking this survey, right? That's what you, you responded to me, too, which is, which is great. I'm just trying to figure out how we get from 56, I think it was 56%, to, to the target of 80%. So, did they give any additional feedback?
On the staff satisfaction? That is something that the individual schools are going to be working at. There is a drill down on, each of these is a composite of multiple questions. And so the, we do have the detail on the individual questions. All of that will be published tomorrow, but has been available to all of the administration to really look at their, not just the global district overview, but specifically what's going on at the individual schools. And this is part of their SIP, so.
That would be great, because I just know how much is, is being done to try to support them. And I want to make sure that they're feeling that as well. And I think once we get, I guess, a little bit more information with the drill down from school to school, I may have some additional questions. But, and thank you for sharing the other information about the risk assessments. I think that that was a piece that a lot of us were probably missing the clarity on, so, thank you.
Ms. Downey?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to follow up to ask if we could just get the data of the response rates, the number of questionnaires. Is that going to come to us?
Yeah.
When did that come?
It's in the.
In, in the questions that I asked, Dr. Jones had sent that all to you.
That we just got it.
We just got it.
We just got it in our MOX.
Like, oh, okay, today?
Yeah.
Wait, okay. I did not, yeah.
We just got it, though, yesterday.
Oh, okay.
So we worked really hard to try to get it to you. I just didn't want you to think we didn't get it.
Okay.
And I think we will, this is just the first time, this is like, high-level stuff. We're going to dig into this again.
That's fine. Thank you.
Oh, it's, we're gonna, thank you. We are tying this to the retreat in October for student achievement, so. But yeah, sticking with that. I mean, I think Lil said it best, right? It was great to see the homeschool connection move 10% over the past three years, but we also have to make sure, and that was great for parents. But the staff and the students need to feel that same growth.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think that's kind of the best way to sum it up, if I could do so. And are there any other questions, or should we? Okay. So, thank you, Jen. Going to, and that's, leads us right into the next agenda topic, Strategic Plan Update. Dr. Mercanti Anthony.
So, so it is, and honestly, it is my great pleasure to introduce this, this agenda item, because we know it's been a, a long time coming, and we've been jokes about it, and I've joked about it and things like that. But I do think, at the board level, but in reality, the draft strategic plan that comes to the board tonight really is set up to continue our path towards excellence. Let me just introduce it briefly, and then I want to turn it over, turn it over to Dr. Jones, who will explain and walk through what you, what you received here, what we're looking at, and as far as the, the goals here, and the plan forward. The, so what we, when we talk about the strategic plan, I think it's very important for us at the board, and for the community, to understand what it is, and what it's not. So 12, 13 years ago, there was a very large community conversation that the board, a previous board engaged in around the vision of the graduate, and what 21st century skills graduates of the system should, should have. It's a very thoughtful document. The strategic plan, ever since then, and this next five-year version of the strategic plan, really what it seeks to do is help support the more fully realized that vision of the graduate for students. That is the purpose of the strategic plan. The strategic plan focuses on the core work of the district, when we're talking about teaching and learning, focusing mostly on academic achievement and the other growth of students. It is not all encompassing of all work of the board. Right? Strategic plan is not a capital document. It's not about board policy and things like that. It's very much focused on the teaching and learning and the work at schools. Each schools, each building's school improvement plan will be based off the strategic plan, and that's, again, grounded in teaching and learning. The other thing to make sure to point out here, before I turn it over, in what you're looking at here are some of the goals. This is not the plan. It's not the whole plan. There are some strategies here, and things like that. But when we drafted, when the, when the Strategic Plan Committee and Dr. Jones and other administrations, we, we wanted to, we were very clear that what we didn't want was this version of the strategic plan to be a very detailed, five-year, we're going to do this in year two, this in year three, this in year four, because we know things change. And we know when we're talking about improvement science and continuous improvement, we know that you can't plan that far ahead. So what you see here, which we talked about, which we've previously talked about, the board, to the board, or our six stretch goals. We define stretch goals as audacious, ambitious, long-term, long-term girl, goals that will help us more fully realize vision of the graduate. The, you see tied to each of those stretch goals, a metric for each year to help support us gradually getting there over the course of five years. But the strategies, how we're going to do that, is intentionally fuzzy. We have some broad strokes here. The Strategic Plan Committee will continue to meet, and will continue to meet and have conversations at the board level, and the community, and PTAC, and everybody else. But those strategies are going to evolve over time, as we measure the metrics year by year and month by month. All that said, so with that said, let me turn it over to Dr. Jones to, to, to talk a little bit about what you're looking at.
Just before you start, I think it's awesome. What's not here, and what I think also needs to be here, are there, there are additional documents that are hyperlinked to these. You'll see where it says detailed outline and methodology. I think that's also important when you're reviewing this, as, as members of the board, as well, as well as members of the community, to understand, because it goes into a much greater detail regarding the strategies and how the metrics are to be achieved. So I think if we could get those posted by tomorrow, so that people could pull them up, I think that'd be helpful for this. Unless it's already on there by hyperlink, it's just not printed. Okay, got it. Good.
I was just going to add one other thing. One of the biggest things we had talked about was ensuring that our, our staff had buy-in to this, because if they don't have buy-in, this wasn't going to work. They did. So I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. We're not just demanding of things, that they were involved, very involved in, in a lot of coming up with some of these strategies and plans. And I was going to say additionally, one of the biggest things we had missed out on our first time was our goals to be, you know, time-sensitive, to be something that we could, that were measurable, and a way for us to be able to go back and sort of measure how we were doing along the course. And that is really something that is built in here, and you'll see as we move forward. And as both Karen and Michael Joseph mentioned, that I think that there's, there, there's an element that, of flexibility here. And so that's why things might be, I think the term you used was a little fuzzy, was that things do change as we move forward, and we may see something that's working, and something that's not. And we want to be able to be able to make some of those changes in the strategies as we go forward, to still meet those targets and metrics. I don't know if that helps. But that was just, I know, something I wanted to share that we've talked about for a long time in building this.
Mike, if you don't mind, I know you were going to bring it up for us, just so that people that are here can actually see it. So first of all, let me say, I, I met with Dr. Mercanti Anthony right when he took over this committee. And one of the things we talked about was trying to have really, at the time, I always call it planning on a page. I think you call it something else. But we both were of the, the like mindset that what we were trying to avoid also is having a document that's two inches thick, and that staff never really can grapple and understand, because it ends up going on the shelf after you have the first presentation, and then people get so busy they can't go back to it. We've had great feedback on this, because we have shared it with, like, our senior team. It was shared at our back-to-school meetings out at the buildings, and it's so easy to understand. I mean, the work is really clear on, on the goals, and I think you'll see how they do tie back to the climate survey that even Jen was just sharing. And one of the reasons we put that climate survey on tonight was so you could see the link. So if we look at, first of all, like, the one in the yellow at the top, goal number one, graduation rate. And what you'll see is, at the bottom of that graduation rate, there's a link, and that's what Karen was just referencing, the detailed outline and methodology. And again, this is draft, so we continue to work on that. Can you go ahead and click on that, just so people can see? So everything is embedded in here, where you can actually see the metric. We have, you know, the mission, the vision, and then below that are how we want to accomplish that. And I will say, where you see the cardinal down on the bottom, the one on the top, the first one, those are common across different, different goals. So that just helps you know that that's something that we're working on across everything. And when you get over to the right, go ahead and go back, Mike, to the main page. When you look at the right on the success metrics, one aspect that we've talked a lot about, and some of you have different opinions. I had good meeting this week with Karen Kwalski, and I met early in the morning. And then I also met with Karen Hirsch. She's on the committee before our meeting tonight. And we, we've pushed this to actually be stretch goals. And that's something that some of the board may feel like, oh, that's such a lofty goal, and that's going to be really difficult. But we, that's what we set out to do. So for graduation rate, you'll see that's at 99%. We know that's very doable. And when we look across the state, one of the reasons it is a focus, it can be a number of things that can cause a metric. It could be that we're not tracking our students as they move and they leave us. Is it a data issue? Is it that we've been, we've had the mentality that it's okay if you just graduate in the summer? So we're not intervening soon enough for, you know, freshmen and sophomores to have the credits they need. But right now, where our graduation rate is, it's not, it's not bad. It's a strong graduation rate. But in the state of Connecticut, we're about 82nd or 85th. So we know that we can actually do better in that area. The second goal is mastery of reading, and I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, that reading is at the core of everything we do. It's, it's across every content area. And you can see some of the things that we've been in the works over the last couple of years, when we were kind of, didn't have a plan. We extended the old one, but it didn't stop our work. And I have to say, from the curriculum team, from all of our teachers out in the buildings, they didn't let COVID, we didn't hit pause. And they implemented brand-new programming in the middle of COVID. And I think that there, I want to say that, because I think we should be extremely, extremely proud of our staff and our administrators. When you look at the mastery of reading, again, one of the things that's a little bit different about this metric is we're looking at, and if you look at success metric, 100% of fourth-grade students who've been with GPS for five or more years are reading on grade level. And that's, that is the way that the state has changed, and they're actually looking at it from a five-year view as well. One of the reasons we're doing five years, it helps us understand if our programming is working. When we look across, especially, I'm going to say, our elementaries, it's probably easier to see. Some buildings have more in-migration, out-migration. Some buildings have more EL students. The reality is, if you came to this country and you don't speak English, you're probably not going to be mastering the, the grade-level assessment in three years. That's asking a lot. We know that from all of the research that's out there. But the other caveat to that, I would say, is it doesn't mean we're not watching our results every single year. I mean, we have to look at every single day. We're looking at every student that we need to intervene on. And this board's been very supportive of math interventionists, and reading interventionists, and helping us get to that. So, again, you could click on those detailed outline and methodology, and you would see that. But I won't do, we don't need to do that right now, Mike.
Tony, while you're just on this one, here's my thinking. I mean, my concern, by saying 100%, which, it, I applaud it, but I'm also, are we setting ourselves up for failure if we say 100%? Because there are always students who are going to struggle. So I, I'm just throwing it out there, that I just, you could put it 99. But when you say 100, that's like, we're going to get everyone. And I am concerned that we're then saying, well, we didn't meet it. And then we're going to be explaining it, as opposed to saying 99. I just, I don't know. Karen, Karen's nodding her head yes, that's why.
I, you know, I, I guess I think of it a little bit differently, and we may not hit 100, maybe we'll be 91 or 94. But I don't think we can go into a strategic plan thinking it's okay for any child to not be reading on grade level. And I think if they're not reading on grade level, I want to be able to sit in front of you and say, if we have 6%, what have we been doing over the, you know, five years of this plan, every year when we report back, if we're not seeing the growth? So, and the great thing is, the state also has the growth metric. When we do the retreat, you'll see that the way the state's measuring, I think it's going to be very helpful for the board to understand, too. But I, I feel like it's okay, because if you can't read, everything else is going to be incredibly challenging, and across all content areas. So that, I think that's, it's a lofty goal, but it needs to be our goal.
But on that note, the, please understand, too, Christina, that that 100% is in 2027. That's a future board. That's going to have to explain that number. So, thank you.
If I could, if I could interject, it'd be great if we could let, let Dr. Jones get through everything, then maybe we talk about it the, because, not that this board has ever gone down tangents and talked about one line for 20 minutes, but maybe, maybe we can, maybe we can get through everything and then take questions.
So our third goal, of course, is mastery of math, mathematics. Again, you'll see some of those strategies that you're very aware of, the universal design for learning, all that training we did last year. That's really about making sure we're really keying into what every student needs. The one question I get here, and initially, even, even from staff, we had a lot of discussion, is when you look at that Algebra I metric, the Board of Education, I think predating all of you, that's always been such an important goal. And it didn't really show up as much as our reporting metrics the last kind of five or seven years, but we've still been working on it. And that's the amount of eighth graders who take Algebra I in eighth grade. Now, people have said, well, if it's 80 for SBA and SAT is 80%, why isn't Algebra I? But the reason why Algebra I is set at 75 is that it's very, if it was just set on their success in eighth grade, and an eighth-grade assessment, that would be different. This is talking about 75% of our students are in Algebra I in eighth grade. So what that means is, you would be putting, if you go higher than that, not every student needs to be in Algebra I in eighth grade, nor do they want to be. And for some of those students, you're setting them on a trajectory where then they're starting their freshman year with geometry, they're taking Algebra II, they're now into pre-calc, you're putting them on a calculus track. And really, that should be a parent decision along with the teachers. And we should celebrate if we have 75%. But for some students, it's just not, it's not appropriate. And that's why it's set at 75. The next three, you'll see tie right back again to some of the survey information. We want to continue to increase, to increase family and community engagement, to feel a stronger sense of connection and support. And I have to say, this is one area that I know when Jen Lau and I looked at the data, we were so excited that coming out of COVID, like, on, on our family engagement, that it's up like 22%. And that's after COVID. And I really thought for sure last year, it would just fall apart, because just the mask issue alone, people were so frustrated by the end of last year. But we want to continue on this trajectory, working with our parents. And one of the things you'll also notice that's on here, the number two under strategy, is to increase the frequency, depth of curriculum instruction, and parent education-based workshops. We started that over the last year or so. We are trying to intensify that. Our parents have said they, they want more assistance on how to help their children at home. So we're doing lots of workshops for parents that want to learn about big ideas. Well, how do you find the tutor help when they're at home, and you, as a parent, don't know how to do that math, because you haven't done it in 20 years? So we're really working on that, and it's built into here. Also, the increased student belonging, I think all of you, you know, you, your comments talked about, we want every student to feel connected with our schools. And, and again, we want to see that continue to grow. So if you go into that outline and methodology, you'll see some of the strategies that we're using, that we're planning. Six is to increase positive working environment for teachers and staff, and really to prioritize professional growth as well for all of our staff. This is really important. You know, I guess the good news is, again, coming out of COVID, I, I have to say, I, I don't like us being at like 58, but the idea that we were there before COVID, and we were still there at the end of last year, actually shocked me. I thought it would have dropped probably 20%, because, quite frankly, people were so exhausted last year after being in COVID. I really, I really expected a drop. So I think we can only go up by continuing to work as partners, like, with GEA, and, and being responsive to what we can do to make their jobs that much better. So that's just kind of the draft. Again, it's really planning on a page. Everybody can understand it. And we're really doing a lot of this work right now. And I'm very excited about it. It's been hard not to have really kind of our metrics and our goals, because this, we didn't have the focus for everybody. And this ties so easily to what they're doing at the building level and in their site improvement plan. So this is our draft. I'm happy we finally presented it. Yippee!
Ms. Downey?
Okay, just one more follow-up. On goal four, which we talked about, increase family and community engagement. Community engagement, I'm, I'm going to, like, aren't we really trying to help our families? I'm not really sure what the community engagement element is and if that really is a priority. I mean, there's community information, but it's really about the families. So I'm just kind of throwing that out as food for thought.
So here's how I would see family engagement on that. And, and that'll, that's a good question for us to talk about, I think, from an administrative level. I think engaging the community is everything from, and I think we've done a good job of it, neighbor to neighbor, engaging all of our, we have so many community partners that come in and tutor children after school, all of that.
Community services, but I think maybe that's, maybe it needs to be just rephrased. I just, because I think that's a little confusing to me, it seems like.
I was just going to say, family and community engagement is, I think also how this, if I'm not incorrect, is also how the state sort of terms it. And when you say community, I think it's not just general community or families. When you say families, that community engagement is also the wider version of their family, right? There, it's not, you know, other parts that, that connect. So I think that it's, it's just the term that's used, I think, outside, not just here, it's all over. And much like Christina, I guess the one comment, and I know you just addressed it, I had asked about the math. But I think it's, maybe it's important when we go back in and talk about a hundred percent reaching that math, reading mastery, I'm sorry, that you note here, and it's, we should highlight it, that it's all students who've been here for five years or more for fourth grade. And for eighth grade, it's, you know, five years or more reading on that grade level. I mean, there will always be outliers, we're going to always have a student that has learning differences. I know our special education audit pointed things out like that. And we're working really hard there to, to, which we'll hear about later, discover these issues sooner and provide support sooner. But maybe there's a way we can just add something in there. Just like I said, to me, it's, I don't want to set up for failure, I want to set up for success. And there were, will always be outliers. And I don't want a teacher or a student to ever feel that they're the outlier because they can't get to that point. But the question I actually had also was goal number one, graduation rate. And I think that this may be something that isn't addressed in the added thing, that maybe you can address a little bit. You were talking about flexible scheduling at GHS. I wasn't sure, I mean, if you could sort of address that so people understood what that is. And, you know, I'll just leave it at that as my first question.
I mean, flexible scheduling can be everything from, how are we still intervening on something like reading for a student who's in ninth or tenth grade and still is struggling to read? When do they fit that into their schedule? How are we working with families for those students who really want to be more career-ready? And they want to be able to, for instance, attend Stanford and go to the technical school. It's very, very difficult with our current schedule. So do we need to look at a school within a school in order to provide more opportunities for students? And especially for some of our students who find the expensive college so challenging. You know, they can graduate already ready, you know, to earn a job and, and be able to have a strong skill set to be able to go to college if that's what they choose to do. Or stay within that profession because that's what they love, like an automotive program. So I think it's really trying to look at making sure we're meeting the needs of every student and working with every family.
I think that's great because it's what we talk about, not every student's an academic. Some students are artists, some are athletes, some are great with their hands and, and don't want to, like you said, go to college directly after school. So I think that's a really nice way to sort of focus it. And again, I know we talk about monitoring individual social, emotional, academic supports. And I didn't know if you meant for every single student or students, again, that were on the risk behavior scale, or how we're, you know, I think we can talk about that in deeper depth later. But how to, how to get there, because I know it's something that's truly needed, which we'll, I guess, get to when we get to the next report.
I, I think that has to be for every student. Again, it's just helping every student find success. And when you, one of the, the things that's fascinating to me on the risk assessment is, if you listened last year across the country, that, that data surprised me when I saw it. But we also added social workers in elementary, did that have an impact? You know, because we're trying to be very proactive, pre-K through twelve plus. And I think our, our staff are doing that. So I think that really is every student, but they're at different levels of need.
So thank you. And I want to also thank my other committee members for, you know, getting this out here this year. It's great. I think we'll see a lot of growth.
So I would just make a suggestion. And I'm happy to do it for everyone else. I don't think I need to bore everyone with the comments that I had given Tony earlier this week. But, and maybe with Michael Josephs and Karen, if your comments are written down, I'm happy to share them with the entire board so you can see what comments we had to this draft in particular. But I think if you could, if you have more in-depth comments and you want to ask questions, maybe just to start circulating them amongst the group so we can start collecting them. And then we can discuss them at our next committee meeting so that we can grab them. Because there's a lot of information here. And given the, the hour of the, of the day, you might want to dive into it more and, and your comments might mean more to the rest of us if you wrote them down.
Fair enough. I'm good with that. Everyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for getting this in front of us. I know this is a huge undertaking and the graphics were fantastic. So with that, let's move to the special education update. Dr. H. Oh, my gosh. Did you guys want to say something? I'm sorry, we made you stay for this whole thing and then, good night. Okay. But it was nice to see their smiling faces.
Before you go, before you go on that, you guys did some tremendous work. And I don't think it should go without being noticed or said, and we really, really do appreciate it. Obviously, we, the three of us sat on the committee, but we did not do what created this. You guys all did, and I think it needs to be recognized. I recognize it, the rest of the board. And I want to make sure that everybody here and still online realizes the effort that went in to create this document. Because I do think it's, it's excellent. So thank you very much.
And the work behind the document that's taking place every day in our schools.
So you have to go home and get some sleep as a result. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Special education update, Dr. H.
So I did the recording and posted it with the board docs.
I wanted to give everyone a test, if they listen to the video. Okay.
Of course they did.
Okay, so where might Dr. H live? You must live in a city. Did you record this at home?
No, I actually, I know why you're asking. I actually recorded it in the office.
Oh, my, was there a serious traffic situation?
So, so in my office, when you can hear the fire department, I have to say that it took me an hour to record the five and a half minutes between the noises. There, there were a couple, so yes.
It's like, maybe she commutes from New York City. I'm so intrigued.
So now you know what the noise is, what it sounds like at Half Meyer.
Okay, so that was my big question. No, so anyway. Okay, go ahead.
I only have one question. I'm, by the way, being a New Yorker, I didn't even, I literally tuned all of that out. I like literally didn't hear a single honk behind you.
I live in backcountry.
So I was going to say, I just know that, you know, having visited some of the schools, I know, having read a lot of anecdotal details in a lot of articles about what's going on here, elsewhere, you know, that we have a lot of, and we've talked about this, and a lot of an increase of students with needs, many of whom aren't really, don't have IEPs, don't have 504s. I know that we're seeing a lot more increase in needs, especially from students going from elementary to middle, you know. So I just wanted to sort of ask a quick question sort of about staffing. Just if we have enough support staff, our psychologists, our paras, if we have open positions and something, you know, I just want to make sure that we have that in place because all the work you're doing is so incredible.
Thank you. We have, for vacant positions, all of our special education teacher positions have been filled. We are waiting for some that we've recently hired that need to still be released from their school district. But we've covered that internally. Some of our substitute teachers have come back and are filling those classes. Our vacancies really are with our school psychologists. We have a school-based school psychologist position open, an evaluation team, school psychologist position that's open, a part-time school psychologist open, and a maternity leave as well. So it's, it's a.
If you're a mental health professional and you're listening to this, please take a look at what.
I, I was talking with a school psychologist at one of the private schools today. And I was like, you know, we have some openings. Are you, are you interested? I'm out recruiting everywhere I can. So that's where our vacancies are. We do have some para vacancies. I know that HR has been working so hard to recruit as well as to process the paras to be able to get them into the, to be able to get them into the schools. So every day, they're filling up. So we still have some vacancies, but we're, we're getting there. So it's a.
The fact that we, we have filled all the special education educator roles is already a big step forward, so that's great.
Michael Joseph.
So first, I want to commend Dr. H for modeling the spirit of lifelong learning and learning how to do the video. Because I know that was, that was great. So I have a bunch of questions, but I'm, for the interest of time, I wanted to limit it to the most important here. Can you explain what it means when you, when you say that the state has found us disproportionate?
Sure. So the state has specific guidelines in looking at different eligibilities in different categories based on ethnicity. In the area of intellectual disability, under the category of Hispanic, the state has found that we are disproportionate. We are disproportionate if we are, have a risk ratio of a three-point-zero or more. Our risk ratio in that area is a four-point-one, four-point-two. So each year we look at that data and they look for, are you declining or are you staying the same? We were in somewhat of a decline within a three to four. And then last, last October, our number popped back up to a four. So the state has found that we're disproportionate in that area. The other area that we are disproportionate in is speech and language in the area for our Hispanic students. So again, the risk ratio is, we are a three-point-three in that area. And so that's an area that the state is monitoring our disproportionality in.
So what are our next steps there?
So our next steps are, one, so part of the requirement for being found disproportionate is part of our IDA grant is a set aside to be able to address that. Part of what we have done is, Mr. Dan Katz, who happens to be here, our new hire, is part of his responsibility is evaluating and supervising our evaluation teams and working with our evaluation teams at the schools to look at our evaluation, our identification process when we're doing our assessments to make sure that we are identifying our students in the appropriate category and that we're considering all eligibilities we're testing correctly. So that's one of the corrective actions. The other is that we're looking through our MTSS process. What are we doing in terms of intervening? And so looking at, working with specifically speech and language to look at our processes of identification and what we can do on the early end before the identification.
I don't want to editorialize too much, but I can understand that with speech and language, the, where the bilingual evaluation is always, you know, a challenge and key to that. On ID, I mean, it is what it is there. They, but I can say that you can, it seems kind of silly the state would be holding us accountable for that. I mean, that's, those are pretty hard metrics when, when we get to, when, when we're identifying students with that particular classification. Okay, so the only other thing I wanted to, I was hoping you could talk about because you, you've mentioned this in the, in the report. The, I thought we were talking about a little bit about co-teaching and the plan moving forward. I don't know if we've given, if we really know the next wave of expansion, especially since our pre-K numbers are up. If we, if we know at this point if we're, if, which way we're going. They, or if we have to go both ways, like both laterally and up and, you know, you know what I mean? Go ahead, it's late.
Yes. So, so that is part of the budget discussion right now. So, and as Dr. Jones gets ready for her budget presentation, those are things that we're, we're considering and we're looking at is both expanding from, so our first grade can move into second grade. So right now we have a kindergarten and a first. So those first graders can move to second as well as looking at our numbers and our success of our kindergarten. And do we need to open up another kindergarten at another school to both? Because of the popularity, you know, we have five spots at one school. Do we need to open that at another school to be able to have more students in there? So that's part of the budget discussion. And so I ask you guys to keep that in mind as it's being presented, that, that it does come with the cost of a teacher for that, for two teachers if we go both horizontal and lateral.
And I think we're going to have to think about some metrics to, to show how, how the program's gaining success, even though it's so small.
I was so pleased with the public comment today and having that parent share experience. And that's, that's why we all do what we do and to have that shared was, I'm so happy.
Ms. Downey.
I was going to actually ask a question to, to, the co-teaching and the unique learner. I was going to ask you about how those were going, how many students we have in those. Because I, I did listen to the video a couple of days ago, it might have been in there. But if you could just give us a quick overview on the co-teaching and the unique learner in terms of children, how many, et cetera.
So our kindergarten has four students. Our first grade, I think has two, could be one, but I, I, I thought that we were at two. And then our unique, our unique learner has one student in it right now. But we have a couple other families that are looking at the program now that there's another student that's in there to be able to see the program running.
Okay, thank you. And then just, you mentioned school psychologists because kind of, it was interesting, first couple of days of school when we were making the rounds. And it was interesting, several schools commented on changing, I guess, we've reallocated how we have them in the different schools. If you could just kind of speak briefly to how you made those decisions. I know we're short-staffed, but kind of assuming you have a full staff, how you would do it.
The reallocation doesn't have to do with being staffed fully. It has to do with creating equity across the district and looking at the numbers of students within the school and looking at the workload within the schools. So there has been a big disparity between certain schools and certain caseloads. So you could be a school psychologist and be responsible for fifty-five identified students, or you could have twenty identified students. So the, so it's a big difference. And so looking at how we can create a little bit more equity and make sure that all students are getting what, what they need. So it's not trying to take away services from anybody. Really looking at the analysis of the caseloads, of the workload, the time, and making sure that everybody can get what they, can get what they need.
Thank you.
Ms. Costa.
So I'm a little surprised by the very few number of students. Was that, did you have a target in mind for the co-teaching classroom, the unique learner program? Did you have any targets that, or expectations? Because I, I think it's a, you know, looking at it as a practical matter, you know, families having to choose to take their child out of their neighborhood school to attend a co-taught classroom, you know, in, in central Greenwich, I mean, Cosco is pretty central. But that sort of says to me, we're missing a broad swath of students that would benefit. And obviously, I know the financial constraints probably don't allow us to do that at every school. But is, that seems to be a very relatively small number.
For the co-teaching, it is supposed to be a small number. So in terms of, we're looking at a cap of five students. So if we look at the kindergarten, we have four of the five. We also don't want to pack it so that, for example, we had a family who moved in from another district first grader. And we were able to talk about, do you want to go to your homeschool or do you want to go to the co-teaching? Which was actually the program that had been recommended from the previous. Recently, there was a, another recommendation for a co-teaching. So we want to make sure we have the ability to, we, we want to start out full. we, we want to start out full. So you're right. But at the same time, also have, have room to move a student in if we need to. The, the goal is to be able to offer a continuum of options. So we want to make sure that we, we have a full class, but also have the ability to have students who move in. For the kindergarten, it was a little bit easier because we were moving from preschool into kindergarten. First grade meant for some students, it was changing schools. But we still, as I said, we, there are still conversations about some students where they might move into that. So we're really only looking at a max of five students within that program. So those numbers are good. For our co, for our unique learner, I think I had many conversations with parents who are interested, but it's really hard to be the first one. And so, you know, that, that's one of those, those things that since we've had one student, we've had a lot of more interest in the program and parents are looking at it in a different light. Cause there's something to visit now. It's very, it was very hard in the spring to imagine there's this class we're going to have. You weren't able to meet the teacher, you can't see the room. And so we now have that. And so now it's a little bit of a different conversation.
Good to know. Thank you.
Karen, anyone else?
I just wanted to ask a quick question because I know this is just sort of a quick overview and, you know, I know there was a bunch of information included in, oh, my brain just went, where'd it go? In our overview. You know, the timeline of where things are and where we're going to be. I know a lot of stuff is, was completed in January 22. There were other things that said, you know, we were in process of in 21, 22, and things that are coming down the pike. I just didn't know when we might see an update, just at some point during the year or earlier on, you know, the, the action plan, the overview. I just know a couple of questions had, had been asked. Cause there was some stuff that was still in progress. And so I don't know when we might be able to just get an updated version of that, where we are with some of those topics.
So in June, I had done a presentation to the board and with it being summer, not much had changed. I mean, while we still were working on things and putting things in place, there really wasn't a drastic change in where we were in the action plan from the presentation to June to, to now in September. So the next time, I think I'm on in another six weeks-ish. And so at that time, we'll have moved into the school year and can give another further update.
Yeah, you're on for November 16th.
Yeah, that's what I was just double checking. Cause I was gonna say, there's some stuff in the, the, before that I know we've already completed or were on target to complete. And I just know it hasn't been updated. And I just wanted to make sure that we have that at some point so that we can change some of those yellows to greens and so forth. No, the, the amount that you've gotten done in such a short window of time is absolutely incredible. I've heard wonderful feedback from parents and families throughout the district. And we had speakers earlier tonight sort of addressing some of that. I think that that, that speaks so loudly, at least to me, because of the years spent standing where you are begging for, for change for our families. And now we're seeing it happen on a daily basis. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you very much, Dr. H. Okay, with that, going to Central Middle School. Okay. Central Middle School update, Dr. Jones.
I really don't have much to add, so I won't like the labor, because I think Laura Costa actually talked about, yeah, talked about that. They're meeting weekly, I believe, moving full steam ahead.
We're a cheery bunch. We meet every Tuesday at 8:00 AM.
Does Mr. Hilli want to say something since he's here? Did he need to add anything? Now? Perfect. And I even, I appreciate the efficiency of the comment. Okay. With that, as we've promised, to then always have Western Middle School update. I'm hoping for a robust update here.
It's tough to give a robust update right now. The remedial, remedial action plan is in with DEEP, it's in with EPA. Last week they did send a letter they wanted us to notarize, which means you're getting towards the end. But we were continuing to wait for their final approval. And then the next, the next step is when we will start into that public hearing piece. If you remember where we'll have probably, probably in here, we'll have a, the public hearing where people could come and support the project or not.
We have any sense on one that might be?
We were really aiming for October. I know that last update, that's kind of where we were still sitting. So I'm hopeful.
Waiting for it next?
You have to wait until the DEEP and the EPA actually sign off on their remedial action plan.
Remember the whole RAP? Anyone else? Okay. All right, that's very good. All right. Financial and staff report, Blaze, you're up.
Everybody, can you hear me?
You're good. Go ahead.
All right. So the first item I have before you is the year end report for fiscal year 22. Base, pretty straightforward for standard reporting, but normally I think this goes before the board, maybe in July, but you had a pretty packed summer. So this report is here before you for review and approval. There's, there's not too much that should stand out from some of the prior reports I was looking at. Summary page on the front, operating was 99.7% fully executed for fiscal year 22. The, under, I think, some real strong prioritization from Dr. Jones, the GPS made some great execution on open capital. So that's reflected in the capital numbers. And the federal programs obviously had major impacts on the school lunch program, which you would see in the financials there. But if any, other than that, if anybody has any specific questions or would like me to run through anything specific, let me know.
Ms. Costa.
Um, so I, we got some questions. At least I did, about the school lunch program and how long it'll be free for all. That's until the money runs out is, is all we know.
I think the last I heard, and Dr. Jones might have a better number or timeframe, but we're looking at planning purposes sometime between the end of October or November.
And then I just looked at exhibit two and I noticed the preschool tuition goes into the town's general fund. Is that?
The revenue. Yeah.
But it's our school. Why do they get the money?
Yeah. And let me just make sure I'm looking at the same thing. So in exhibit two.
Preschool tuition, $500,000.
Yeah, we're recording the revenue, but I don't think that actually goes into the general fund. But let me double check on that for you and I'll send you an email.
I, yeah, thank you.
No? Okay. All right. This is now information. Okay. So let's go on to budget transfers. Blaze.
Transfers this month are informational only. Most of them are all pretty routine, just internal JVs. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions about them?
I had a question. With respect to number two, you're moving it from administration to instruction. So it, that's office services to, the program is CIPL, which is rental maintenance and software. So that's the same code. I think they're called general codes. That's the same general code.
Same, it's the same major object code. Yep. So those are 200s.
So, cause what caught my eye is just the difference between, so that's the same, is this, is just the other component with instruction. It actually, you know, it would be helpful going forward if you had the general object codes, like a column for the general object codes going forward. So we could just see where they, what they are.
I think that's a good idea. So in this one, you're going, we're going, and it's going from 600 to 620. And the major object codes are staying in 200s. And I think we'll add those on the next report.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I like that.
Great. Any other questions? This topic? Okay. Blaze, may it always be this easy. Okay. Next, we are going to rental rates and tuition and fees.
Sean is very mad right now.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes, so.
You don't think Sean's online watching?
First one that I think we'll look at are the rental rates. I think that was in your packet first. So what I think we would be asking the board to do, if it's possible, is to vote on the rental rates. Some background here, if it's possible, but otherwise we could look at doing this at the next meeting. Basically because of COVID, I think that there was no contract. I think the last time the board voted on this, we had the attached approved rental rates from 2019. The rental rates are primarily driven by labor. So these rates are basically updated to reflect the cost of contract that we're at now with the new hourly rates and the Teamster rate. Right now, because we're using the 2019 contract labor rates, we're actually running a deficit in the rentals, like from outside groups, because we're paying them at the current fiscal year contractual rate. But the fee is from, you know, prior year labor rates. Which is why we brought this before you now.
Okay, that's really important. I would just like to know why everybody's rate went up except for the auditorium student employees. The GHS.
Yes.
They stayed at $22.
They did.
Everybody else got a bump.
I think at the moment, just in the, in the term of my own timeframe for the amount of things that I'm processing and also working on at the moment with Dr. Jones in the last three weeks. Something we did talk about was, once we have a little more time, was digesting the entire fee, fee structure and looking at a review for the last time, you know, some of the fee rates and some of these things and what we should be doing for a couple of these. At the moment though, we thought it was important to just get to the labor rates. That would warrant a larger discussion. So this before you right now is just updating the labor rates to match the contractual increases.
We'd have to suspend our rules, guys, obviously if you want to take action on this. I mean, I'm happy to do, well, he's, they're kind of asking us to. Yeah.
I think by policy purposes, we have to. I think we, there's a policy that says that we have to approve these rates.
Correct. Right. And it seems like we're.
We would just have to take a vote to move it from, from discussion to action item.
That's fine. And we just needed two thirds.
But I have a quick, can I have a quick question before we do that? So Blaze, I, this is, thank you for informing us. And I know you said we're running in a deficit. If we work to approve these tonight or whenever, the question is, is, does that retroactively affect anybody that signed a contract for upcoming rentals? Or, you know, or do we keep with whatever signed as of today, if we vote this in today?
You're talking about, so people that are planning their events next month that already have. I, I think that would be a good question. I, I don't know what the historical practice has been as they were updated, since they were been effective, but.
If they have a signed contract with us for a particular rate, us changing this will not proactively go back and change their contract. We have a signed contract with that number.
And it actually makes all the more reason that we should sign it, vote on it tonight for future, all the contracts we're going to sign in the next.
No, that's what I was just double checking. I wanted to make sure that if people have already signed and it stays there, but if they have it out now and it's not signed, then they'll get a new contract.
Correct. If it's not signed.
To Blaze's point, I mean, we can make this a broader discussion at one point. Like I'd argue we should be charging more. But I think at this point, let's just get it right so that we're not losing money. So I think we need a motion to waive the first read is what we need.
No, it's just a motion to take it up as an action item.
You think so?
Yeah, because it's not a first read, second read. That's only policies that are required.
Okay.
So it's a motion to convert it. I hereby move that we take this up as an action item this evening.
Happy to second that. All in favor? That passes eight zero. Now you want to put the motion on the table?
Motion to approve the rental fee structure as proposed by Mr. Levitan.
Okay, Michael Joseph seconded that. All in favor? That passes eight zero. Okay. Sean really is annoyed. That was super easy. Okay.
Thank you. And I do think that you brought up a good comment that, you know, a larger conversation at looking at the fees is probably warranted at this point. So that's something that we can work on.
Great. Okay. So now tuition and fees.
Tuition and fees. Two parts here. We're talking about the, you know, non-resident tuition program for GPS and town staff on schedule A. And then we're also looking at the kindergarten program, which would be on schedule B. And then we have the proposed tuition increases. I think we received a few questions about where the tuition rates kind of come from and what the logic is behind them. This administration, you know, inherited the tuition structure, similar to some of the fee structures. Historically, we've been increasing between two and three percent, you know, trying to balance inflation against, you know, wage increases and, you know, the burden, the shop cost increase. So that's kind of reflected before you, but I'm happy to take questions about what's specific from anybody?
Ms. Downey.
Just to confirm, so you're proposing a 3% increase on all these items? Just to be sure we understand what we're voting on.
3% increase. Yeah. So the, the thought there was between the two and three percent historical, without kind of changing something to that, with inflation, what it is. The higher end, 3% makes more sense. Also looking at the weight, the contractual wage increases. And where the labor market kind of is, try to balance those two besides the equation.
This is information only. So if we want to maybe follow up with questions?
Cause this is for next year, right? For 23, 24, correct, Blaze?
This is for 23, 24.
So it is important as they're building the operating budget. But I think we could take it up if we want as an action item in, you know, maybe the next meeting. Cause I imagine this, you'd want to go through this a little bit more in detail. Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick, so this is for, I'm sorry, for 23, 24, but I see there's only a column here for 22.
The first two pages, based on historical format, yeah, are like information. I think it's also a report. So you have some context for what we're talking about. And then the fee is actually starting on, on the third page of the packet on this topic. You'll see a proposed tuition rate, 23, 24.
Page one.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay.
So for example, if you look at biology, that was the class that you ended up not running during last summer. And so my question was, is that because of the cost of it? Or was it because you couldn't get staffing? Okay. Any other questions on this topic? Okay. Well, we will obviously bring this back so we can ask some questions of Blaze in the interim if there are any. Okay, let's move to action items. Blaze, you're still up. Budget resolution. Can I get a motion to put this on the table? One second. Does anyone have it in front of them? Go ahead. Laura, could you read it?
Motion to put the fiscal year 23 budget resolution on the table.
24.
Says 23 on it. Approve the attached fiscal year 24 budget resolution as proposed.
I will second that.
The title is incorrect.
I will second that. Okay, Blaze.
Slipping through the cracks here. Sorry about that. So yeah, the resolution, this is the language that's currently taken out of the approved budget from last year. No change, except for the change in red. And as a reminder, these are the, these get adopted. And as a reminder, these are the, uh, these get adopted with the budget from the town, which allows us to appropriate funds without having to go back through and seek R T M approval to get them assigned into an account code. So things like your basic, you know, this is, what's really important are two pieces of resolutions. It would be um, grant funding and having, so when we get the grant funding that's labeled in the resolutions, we can have them appropriated into the appropriate account code without having to get R T M approval on some of them. And then also what, what, what we're proposing here for athletics. Um, basically, because the revenue goes to the general fund, unless we have a resolution, and this is for all departments, and it's particularly impactful for us at the Board of Ed. Um, we have uh, basically no ability to then recoup the related expenses with that. So if we start charging again for athletics, um, and the primary reason behind that is more for things like operational improvements for the experience, like crowd control, safety, um, ensuring equal representation for different sides. So there's a reason to implement ticketing, for example. There's costs associated with that. You have to have, you know, three ticket collectors collecting tickets. There's some staff expense there. Um, the revenue generated from those sales goes into the town general fund though, without this resolution. So this resolution here in red would be, would be basically modeled on what we do with the rental of the facilities, so it matches the expenses, and it would go back to the Board of Ed's operating budget instead of going to the town's general fund. That, that's what the resolution here is proposed to do. That's the only change.
Do you have a comment, Joe? Do you have a comment?
Oh, no, we added that one, just.
Okay.
After discovering we didn't go towards that proper.
I like that, right?
Right, so to clarify, for years, um, ticket revenue collected at athletic events, that money has not stayed with the, with the district.
That's correct.
Well, we did just build a really nice new ticket booth, so this sounds like a perfect opportunity.
Why we did it. We have to do something with the ticket booth.
Well done, Joe.
How did we discover this?
I asked, where does the money go? And honestly, we couldn't find out. We didn't know.
Good job, Jim.
Alright.
It was a good question.
Keep asking questions like that, Joe. Alright.
I'd like to call the question.
All in favor of the motion on the table? That passes eight zero. Thank you, okay. Second and last action item, G E A teacher contract. Would you like to make a motion, Joe, to put this on the table? It's actually not listed, so you could just say to approve the.
I would like to make a motion to approve the G E A teachers' contract.
I'm happy to second that, okay. Alright, discussion, Joe?
Oh, yes. Um, there's a lot of ways to negotiate a contract. I've done it professionally for forty years. A little about myself when negotiating, presently I own a commodities company, and I am the global uh, price setter of a commodity. Uh, the C M E pays me a lot of money to do that, and I price the forward curve based on hearing people's uh, fair valuation. Some people try to cheat the number to be higher, some treat it to be lower. Uh, but I have to interpret what the fair price is, so I do that, and I run a business and make a whole lot of money based on that. I had the uh, wonderful opportunity uh, to talk to Lil about our contract, where she had a sincere, honest attempt at a negotiation to settle on a price. Uh, obviously, there were other details in the contract which we worked out, which helped us. We narrowed it down to one uh, common denominator, which we had to work out, which ended up being the uh, the G W I, the, the raise, increase across to all the teachers and the uh, the contribution to the insurance. Uh, what I thought during this unique time of inflationary volatility, it would be impossible to settle this contract. I told Lil that, and in our, our team negotiation, the spread between the bid and the offer, uh, the proposal that we wanted, the proposal they want, you could drive a truck through. It was just not there. The only way we were able to get anything is because Lil's sincere honesty and her forthcoming about wanting to settle a contract at a fair valuation. She would go to her people, and she would make them come to a contract, because in this time, it was very important for us going forward to make sure we work together. It was very important to find a fair number, not try to, and also being very fiscally responsible, how to defend the interests of the town. In an interest rate rising environment, if the new contract is higher than the old contract, which in a, 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 when in an inflationary environment, it has to be, it'll of course be questioned. And I knew that we would be better protected if we went to arbitration, when an outside entity settled a contract for us, so we cannot be blamed. But still Lil pushed on, and she wanted to get a fair agreement on a contract. I thought our number was not going to meet her expectations or her team's expectations, but she looked beyond that and said, there are a lot of issues that we'd like to settle, which we worked very closely on. There's a number which we can meet, which we can win, uh, agreed to this number, that we could actually have a giant morale boost, and the teachers who have worked so hard o- over the last couple of years and pushed through the adversity that they did push through, to understand that the Board of Education is supporting the teachers in this contract negotiation, fully understanding that I was looking at protecting the interest of the town's uh, funds. But she also said that she felt it was really important for us to work together. I truly feel it's very important for us to work together, to strike this deal, this fair deal. And I might be asked by the R T M whether we got a good deal. No, we didn't. We got a fair deal. We got a deal that suited them, that she fought her people to come to, and I hope I can persuade my people to come, because this is a fair deal, and they deserve a fair deal after what they just went through.
Ms. Downey, would you like to add to that?
Wow, that's a tough act to follow, Joe. But it's, the night is late, so, um, I, I, I've said this to some of my colleagues, I wanted to um, give kudos to Joe for managing this process well. Kudos to Lil for her participation in the process. I think um, there was a lot of time spent in Havemire this summer, um, by all of us, but I think the conversations were productive. Um, I think we talked through a lot of the issues, and I, and I agree with Joe, I think we came out with a fair deal. I think we all looked at the environment we're in in the world. I think we looked at what a potential, if we couldn't make a deal, what an arbitration result would be. And I think, to me, this was the right deal to come to. So I, I thank everyone for their efforts um, in this, Dr. Jones and Dr. Bud also. It, it, everybody put a lot of time and effort into really thinking through the process and having discussions which weren't always easy.
One more point, thank you, my partners working together on this. We did spend a lot of time doing this, but one thing that, tonight, there was a, a couple of different opinions on a lot of different things, but one thing that was universal in the room tonight, as we disagreed with many issues, they spoke their opinion, was that they supported, one hundred percent of the people supported our teachers. They all did. No matter what their opinion was about other things, they support their teachers. And this is not an administration contract, and that's what they were, some of the people were just criticizing that. Some were supporting the administration. This is not that contract. This is a contract with the teachers and one hundred percent of the people in this room, uh, to support, support our teachers.
And I'll just add, I was the third person on the committee, this is my first time on the committee, and I was truly impressed by my colleagues. Um, Joe led us through a huge effort. He included um, many voices, which was thoughtful, and, um, and I will say that Dr. Jones and Dr. Bud also did a great job on language. We focused a lot on the numbers, on the three of us, but they focused a lot on the language that hopefully also um, improved things for the teachers as well as for the students and the parents and the community. Um, look, I think fair is the right word, it's fine, in the sense that neither one of us are elated, and that means we reached compromise. So, um, with that, any other comments from my colleagues?
Uh, yeah.
Cody?
Sure, um, I uh, I wanted to compliment my colleagues who did the negotiation. Uh, I think it's a pretty impossible task. Um, I was thinking about, I'm gonna get the quote wrong, but there's an H L Mencken line, it's like, you know, three foxes in a hand voting on what's for lunch. And I think the way that the legal structure negotiating with public sector unions is like that. So I actually am going to vote against it, but not because I think that you got a bad deal. You probably got the best deal that you can. I philosophically don't like um, uh, the way this is done, and even if we ended up in a worse place in arbitration, I think anything that draws attention to the way the system works is, you know, mildly helpful. Uh, but I could see how someone else would disagree with that. I think I was just looking at this, in Greenwich, the average compensation per teacher is a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, the next highest in the state is New Canaan at a hundred twenty-one thousand. Uh, the lowest in the state, which that's probably not a great comparison, is Madison, Connecticut, eighty-five thousand. So we're, we have a very generous compensation structure. That's not any of your guys' fault. Uh, there's a lot of stats on this, and when I reviewed them, it's, comes down to, it's actually not the teachers' union's fault either. If I were them, I would play my hand the way, you know, it's been dealt. It's uh, there's a people, anyone who's still up and listening, the Municipal Employee Relations Act, it's a nineteen sixty-five law in Connecticut, is a disaster. It's what creates this system. It perpetuates this problem. The core uh, problem with union contract in general is that it doesn't differentiate between, um, it doesn't pay teachers based on how good they are. Uh, so some teachers are overpaid, some teachers are underpaid, uh, and the difference is the quality. And we don't have a system that allows us to differentiate. Um, so I wanted to just say, I think you guys did a great job. I think, uh, what a miserable way to spend a summer, uh, and I think everyone owes you guys uh, for, you know, fighting the fight. Um, and uh, just wanted to explain, you know, the philosophical underpinnings for why I will vote against it, but uh, give you guys the credit that's due.
Sure, unless anyone else wants to add anything of discussion? No? Alright, so all in favor of the motion? All opposed? Alright, that's fine, passes five-three. Okay, thank you very much. Um, let's go to agenda plan, and I think we do need to talk about a few things here. I'm going to put it out there, the biggest thing I know that we need to, well, we need to probably add one date, but most importantly, we need to, for the October sixth, add um, the capital discussion. So I don't know if we want to remove anything, because I think we really need to make that the focus.
Yeah. I was gonna suggest just removing from October sixth, or just finding another date for uh, our board professional development, because I think capital takes a little bit of precedence due to the time.
Agreed.
Can make a suggestion that our, our professional development would be enhanced by, to the extent every one of us attends the C A B convention in November, which has a variety of training opportunities and learning opportunities. Like Cody, Cody, it's not propaganda. It, you get to choose which sessions you go to.
I have to be honest, it was actually really cool.
It's very educational about, it's about. But being on a board, um, and pop, you know, there's one on policies, and there's things on, it, it's not. We'll have an offline. I, I will say, for those of us who went when we were first elected, which is Karen and myself, we, we got a lot out of it. Um, not, you know, you always need a couple of nuggets. Just need those few nuggets.
Say it was a.
Highly recommend.
It was a great experience. Okay, so, um, let's take board professional development off that. We can vote on Cody going to the conference. Um, and then let's add the strategic plan. Is, go ahead, sorry, anything else? Oh, not the strategic plan, sorry, the capital. That's fair. Do you want to put on the sixth and make it more discussion, or do you want to? I know, I think we put on the twentieth. I think we really need to focus on capital. Okay, alright, so. So we're gonna move the strategic plan to the twentieth. Um, it wasn't on there. As an action item. And we can provide comments per Karen's suggestion to you guys in the interim, and then you could take them up at the committee. Correct. Okay, so then we'll add capital, and do we want to keep these three other items on the board retreat for October sixth? I think so, right?
What is the site improvement plans, Tony?
These are the school improvement plans. I, we could probably take it off if, because capital's gonna need so much.
But it kind of go, we, I mean, I would say that kind of goes with our strategic plan, if we're gonna be voting on it the next meeting. Just at least having a, an update on what they are.
Okay, so we can prove that's the twentieth. Okay.
No, no, I would leave it on the sixth, because if we have to vote on anything, it, it's just, it, it's tied into what the strategic plan is. It's one of the, one of the goals.
Okay. Alright, well, are we, and we're doing the curriculum plan review cycle also in that meeting? That's heavy, we had to make capital first, so we're. Okay. Alright, so, and you'll hopefully have a budget committee that could provide us feedback ahead of that, is that right, Christina?
We're working on getting a date together. The other question is if it's gonna be that, I mean, it's gonna be a heavy date, but we haven't heard data, like on achievement, achievement data for a couple of years. It's gonna be in depth, is a possibility. Not that I necessarily want to move it any earlier, but even if you bump it to six-thirty, we can do pizza again, um, on me this time. I'm okay with earlier.
I'm okay, we're not affecting the public in this case, because it's board retreat.
Okay with pizza.
I would, I would like sushi.
I agree, I'm with Laura.
No soup for you.
Is everyone good with a six-thirty start, if we even did that on October sixth?
Can we do that? Mike, can we just change the meeting time, Mike Antonaccio?
Probably have to notice it as a special meeting, but that's okay.
It would become a special meeting, and that just freezes the agenda, but you can absolutely make the change.
But it's a retreat, so it's not, we're not, we're not voting.
Regularly scheduled meetings, so time or location changes trips a special meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not voting on anything, so making it a special meeting's not like a major.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And also on November third, we have reference to operating and cap, we're, we're not having first read of the capital budget on November third, because we will have voted on it already. Well, and the same with December first. I was just about to say, and, and December fifteen. And so as a result, we need to put the vote of the capital budget to October twentieth. We have to move that.
Correct. No, it's moved up. Okay, so that goes on the twentieth. Okay, I also think that we need to add a, um, after our prior discussions with the chief, I think we'll probably need to have a, hopefully a fast meeting, um, an executive session, and then followed by an action plan in the next week, so that we can go back to the V E T and R T M with a security plan. Um, I know it's eleven-ten, but could.
I don't, we need to know when the chief's gonna be ready for it. I mean, it's kind of hard to plan a meeting if we don't know.
Yeah, it's probably hard to add. I mean, I'll, I'll just send an email to you guys to see if he, I thought he, he probably thought around a week, I think, but let's figure that out, and I'll send you guys an email and see how quickly we can move that. Okay, anything else? No? Okay, I need an important motion. It's costume, okay, a second.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? I think there's anyone seconded, yeah. I'm going with you, okay, great. All in favor, that passes eight-zero. Thank you so much, thanks for sticking with us, good night.